Good evening. Okay, yeah, thank you. Just one nice pleasantry would go a long way. Okay, so for tonight, we have a pretty packed agenda. We have seven public hearings this evening. So the way that we are going to take this... Okay, so we are gonna move council and staff items to the bottom of the agenda, to move as many people as we can through. And we're gonna move our proclamations to the top. So we are going to start with proclamations this evening. Actually, I'm sorry, we probably need to call the roll again. Will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Duggar.
Here.
Hartmeier Prigg.
Here.
Hassan.
Present.
Kimmy.
Here.
Teeter.
Here.
Tivnan.
Here.
Mayor Beatty.
Here. Okay, we're gonna start tonight with three proclamations. I'm gonna offer our first proclamation from the office of the mayor. Whereas the first Friday in June is recognized as National Gun Violence Awareness Day to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and to declare that we, as a country, must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas every day, more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence on average, there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to die from gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas Oregon has had 544 gun deaths every year with a rate of 12.2 deaths per 100,000 people, Oregon has the 33rd highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. Whereas gun homicides predominantly occur in cities, with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 122 cities. And whereas cities across the nation, including in Beaverton, are working to end the senseless violence and evidence-based solutions. Whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas support for the second-minute rights of law-abiding citizens go hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best and are the most familiar with local criminal activity and know how to address it and understand how to keep our communities safe. Whereas the pandemic facing America has dramatically impacted communities and individual sheltering in place, which may result in situations where access to firearms result in an increased risk of intimate partner violence in gun deaths, suicide by gun, and unattentional shootings. And whereas in January 2013, Haida Pendleton, a teenager who marched in the president's inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should now be celebrating her 23rd birthday. And whereas to honor Haida and more than 100 Americans who lives are cut short every day and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizers has designated June 5, 2020 as the first Friday in June as the sixth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And where the idea was inspired by a group of her friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose orange because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of a human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange the first Friday in June 2022 to help raise awareness about gun violence. We renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to all that we can do to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun owners to help keep children safe. Now, I, Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the City of Beaverton, do by proclaim June 2 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Thank you. We have our second proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. A proclamation from the office of the mayor. Whereas Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day or Independence Day, commemorates the events of June 19, 1865, when Major General Gordon Granger led Union soldiers into Galveston, Texas, bringing news that the Civil War had ended and that the Emancipation Proclamation had declared all enslaved people free nearly two and a half years earlier. And whereas, as one of the oldest American holidays, Juneteenth commemorates formerly enslaved individuals and their descendants and has historically been a time of prayer, reflection, and family reunion. And whereas while July 4, 1776, represents the birth of the United States of America and commemorates its independence from British rule, it did not offer independence to enslaved people. And whereas although the Juneteenth celebration is specific to the emancipation of African descendants, its message promotes the continued freedom and economic prosperity of individuals from all races, colors, creeds, and cultures and improves upon the nation's promise of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas, America must never forget or repeat its vivid and tragic events of African-American history, which exposed the dehumanizing impact of racial violence from chattel enslavement to convict leasing, from thousands of lynchings to racial massacres like Tulsa, Oklahoma, in 1921 and Rosewood, Florida, in 1923, from segregation to voter disenfranchisement, from mass incarceration to wrongfully inflicted violence upon innocent who fought for freedom as captured by media in Selma, Alabama, at the Edmund Pettus Bridge. And whereas historically, Juneteenth observances have not always received acknowledgement and recognition, though Juneteenth is a critical component of American history as it marks a turning point in the nation and a step towards equality. And whereas on June 1, 2021, the Oregon Senate unanimously passed House Bill 2168, making Juneteenth an official holiday in Oregon. And whereas Juneteenth commemorates the strength and resolve of Black and African-Americans throughout our history and serves as an opportunity to celebrate the rich and numerous contributions of Black and African-Americans. And whereas this year marks the 157th commemoration of Juneteenth, now therefore, Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the City of Beaverton, does hereby proclaim June 19, 2023, as Juneteenth in the City of Beaverton and call this observance to the attention of all our community members.
Thank you. Mr. Duggar.
Cool. Whereas the City of Beaverton is committed to diversity, equity, inclusion, and mutual respect as fundamental aspects of a healthy community. And whereas the presence, visibility, and celebration of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual-plus community enhances the quality of life in the City of Beaverton. And whereas the LGBTQIA+ community has been the target of discrimination and violence based on gender, sexual orientation, identity, and perceived identity, which conflicts with Beaverton's core values as a community. And whereas LGBTQIA+ rights are human rights. And whereas this country has witnessed a significant amount of anti-trans legislation that seeks to regard the LGBTQIA+ community as lesser. And whereas gay pride events are intended to celebrate visibility and diversity as well as educate and foster engagement. And whereas the City of Beaverton strives to be a welcoming and safe place where people, families, and institutions thrive and the contributions of all are celebrated and valued. And whereas the City of Beaverton's support of LGBTQIA+ Pride Month reflects a commitment to being an ally in supporting marginalized people's rights to love, joy, and expression. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Beaverton do hereby proclaim June 2023 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the City of Beaverton.
Woo-hoo!
Thank you. I do believe we have the Director of Pride, Beaverton, here to accept the proclamation. So we'll take a photo and...
We're gonna have to double up a bunch. Our proclamation was, tonight I accepted our proclamation from our first openly gay city councillor. Thank you very much, John Duggar. I appreciate you. I also wanted to tell you that if you are coming to Pride and you are going to drink your rainbow vodka or your rainbow kicks and all that stuff, you also have to take care of the gay kids. Lots of gay kids are homeless. Seventy-five percent of the homeless children in the Beaverton area are LGBTQIA. Gay kids...
Y'all come over and yell some more. I like the big voice.
The gay community has a higher rate of incarceration, a higher rate of self-harm, a higher rate of suicide island. They get in a lot more trouble because they're looking for love. They're filling a hole because they've been thrown out by their families. They have been rejected by society. They are treated lesser. This proclamation is great, and it's a fabulous start. But later on, when we're arguing about homeless people, I want you to remember, lots of them started off as kids, just trying to figure out who's gonna love them best, who is going to take care of them. I know we gotta talk about books. We gotta talk about all sorts of important things. But this isn't just love is love anymore. This is trans rights are under attack. Trans people are under attack. Doctors are tattling on families that are doing the right thing by seeking gender-affirming care. And our drag queens, the Marines of the gay community, the front and flamboyant ones, are being legislated against actively. They're being attacked and hurt. These are not okay things. So I love that you wanna celebrate Pride and will all take pictures with my flowers, but I also want you to stand up when you see those kids that are hurting. When you see the kids that would rather be dead than think that their parents or their community would love them, that's who we have to take care of. That's who needs to grow up and be safe. That is who needs to have secured housing and be taken care of. I'm leaving so that my seat can be filled by people that need to chat, but I appreciate you, and I look forward to seeing you at Pride. I'll leave some flyers on the table. It's June 25. The parade is at 11. The ABBA cover band is at 3. And I expect a bunch of you people there, too. I'm taking my flowers and I'm going home.
Thank you, Kate. And ABBA is the unofficial Greek-American band, so I'm excited to see you there. Okay, so tonight, we do have seven public hearings. So we're gonna start tonight with public comment. The opening public comment tonight is for items not on the agenda. They do not include comments for our public hearing on campaign and our budget. Comments are limited to two minutes for each person. And I will call up three at a time to sit at the microphone and then three on deck in the chairs. So when I call your first three people to join us at the microphone tonight are Josh Laurie, Brett, Alicia, and on deck will be Bruce. We're getting our steps in tonight, yeah. All right. All right, Josh.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Josh Laurie, and I'm the Student Success Director at Portland Community College. I wanna start by saying thank you. Thank you for listening to our staff. Thank you for listening to our community members. And thank you for, most of all, listening to the students who spoke up last week and advocated for continuing Future Connect. It has been clear during the last month, and I'm sure many months for you all, that the budget decisions you have had made weigh heavy on you. And yet, our voices showed up in written testimony and in Zoom spaces and, of course, here today in what I'm sharing. I believe in the Future Connect program and to this end have dedicated most of my professional career to supporting staff and students who are first-generation, low-income students and trying to start college. Also, I'm here to thank all of those who wrote in, who raised their hands at the last meeting and showed up and listened. And the Future Connect family is strong. I feel that. I wanna share that community colleges provide a service to educate and help build our future in communities through education. Programs of support over provide assistance to students to access and succeed in college at the most opportune time. Yet, the sheer scope and size of PCC, serving 25,000 students, young, old, new, returning, high school age, adults returning to workforce, community education courses, for those who are retired, training programs, anybody who wants to scale up in a trade. Our job in Future Connect is to identify that opportune time when a student graduates from high school and wants to start college. We chose to support students who are first-generation, low-income right when they exited the high school. Students in our program are largely homeless, experiencing alumni of foster care. They have free and reduced lunch. There are students who are parents. Some are seasonal farm workers. Our job in Future Connect is to connect those students and support them. And what I wanna say tonight is I look forward to being a partner in the next year. And I know that our funding was cut in half, and I know those decisions are difficult, but I want to, I look forward to being a better partner in how we support the students in Beaverton and how we can support you as a partner at PCC and in Future Connect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Alicia Burmese, and I have the privilege of serving as the CEO of the Beaverton Area Chamber. Tonight, I'm here before you with a heart filled with gratitude and admiration for your remarkable engagement with our local business community. Over the past months, we've been immensely fortunate to have witnessed your unwavering dedication to fostering meaningful connections between our businesses and city government. Formal meet-and-greets brimming with insightful discussions to informal gatherings where business owners could freely express their concerns over a pint of beer. You have consistently shown up. You've consistently shown up. Not to mention the recent gala that brought together the best of our community in an atmosphere of celebration and camaraderie. However, it's the countless ribbon cuttings that have left a truly indelible mark on our business owners' hearts. I think we had four last week. In the moments of shared joy and accomplishment, as our entrepreneurs stood side-by-side with the mayor and with esteemed city councillors, a profound sense of unity and mutual respect blossomed. You have bestowed upon them the invaluable gift of access to their city government, an avenue to be heard, understood, and supported. This engagement between our vibrant business community and your visionary leadership has proven transformative. Through these interactions, you have not only nurtured relationships, but sowed the seeds of collaboration, trust, and prosperity. The business owners who were once burdened by the constraints of their daily operations now feel empowered to reach out to you, knowing that their concerns will be met with attentive ears and compassionate hearts. Tonight, on behalf of the Beaverton Area Chamber, I extend our deepest gratitude for your active role in forging these connections and championing the voices of our cherished businesses. Your genuine commitment to their success and well-being serves as an inspiring beacon of hope and encouragement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, members of the council. First of all, I wanna say I really appreciate your proclamations today. Would like to associate myself with them, particularly as a survivor of a mass murder shooting in Oregon 42 years ago. As for PCC, I'm a Phi Beta Kappa, graduate summa cum laude in two majors at George Washington University, been a practicing attorney for 26 years, trial lawyer. I started at PCC my first two years. I have nothing but admiration for... Your Honor, I'm at my wit's end. The real reason I'm here. Me and my neighbors have been subjected to torture for the last three weeks. Shoals Ferry Road, between Ellen and Denny, Ellen and Heather. I live at the corner of Southwest Shoals Ferry and Cynthia. All night long, night after night after night, the most horrific noises, shaking of my house. I'm at my wit's end. I wanna know who approved this, to subject me and my neighbors to this, and how much longer it's gonna go on. I've gotta record it here, a small snippet of what I go through. You wanna imagine? Think about nails on a chalkboard. Imagine a six-ton piece of steel being dragged across the pavement at 3:00 in the morning, and you magnify the sound of chalkboard by 50, 60, 70 times. The banging, the shaking. My dog goes nuts from thunderstorms, fireworks, 4th of July. It's all night. It's night after night that he is being tortured himself. When are you gonna put an end to it? Who voted for this?
Thank you for joining us this evening. I'll have the city manager follow up with you on the information on the card.
Oh, I've heard. I've heard. I've got condescending response. Have you thought about getting noise-canceling headphones? Have you thought about getting earplugs? Have you thought about buying a white noise? How about buying thicker drapes? That's what the answer was. The water program said, hey, how about we compensate you with three days of motel stay, right? Not for all this, when you suffer, but for the time that's gonna come. The third day for that would be tonight. It's gonna happen tonight, and it's gonna go on. It's gonna keep going on, right? And I do have to waive any claim. I don't care about the money. I told them to shove it. I wanted to come here and face you and ask you, who voted for this? Who authorized this? When are you gonna put an end to it?
Thank you. I'm not familiar with this project. I'll have the city manager follow up with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brett Francie.
Hi, Brett Francis here. I'm the property manager for DeMaro Ford, Criterion Travel, Northwest College, and Trek Bicycle. Winston Churchill once said, "Never let a good crisis go to waste." In the first week of September 2020, with COVID in full swing, schools closed, future unknown, I received a letter from the city about rezoning all of our property in the new RCBC zone. The letter was mailed to me with a minimum amount of time to respond, which was about four to five days. After working with the Planning Commission for roughly a year, we came up with nothing great but better than what was thrown at us. It was voted down by council in about one minute after consideration, which tells me that they had already made up their decision prior to the meeting. All went quiet for a while, but I knew that under the closed doors of COVID, the planning for Millikan Extension and Loop Projects were in full swing. I had asked several times if there were any preliminary plans or ideas coming our way as we needed to make some major repairs to a building Northwest College occupies. They said they did not have anything to show me quite yet. We end up making roughly $100,000 in repairs between December 22 and March 23 that were absolutely necessary. In the first week of May, I got a letter from DEQ saying they were reopening an investigation to an old oil tank that was removed 25 years ago. Three days later, I was told the four alternatives for the Millikan Extension were complete and that I could meet with Dan Turk to review and discuss. Four days after that, I was hit with loop drawings and initial plans. Our properties are greatly affected by both projects, all of this in about eight days. The Millikan alternatives show us losing between two and four buildings on the alignment. These were shown to my tenants, and they were shocked. With construction estimated to start early 2025, what do you think my tenants are thinking right now? They are thinking of leaving. You can't just move a business in six to 12 months. It takes a lot of time and effort. And I know it's very difficult to run a business during COVID and post-COVID. And believe me, it's not getting any better. Some will say it's getting worse. So what if there is not enough money for the Millikan Extension? Tenants have left. Buildings sit empty. Property taxes increase as usual. The drug addicts now have two-plus buildings to slowly destroy. How would I get any new tenants in the buildings that are in the city's crosshairs for right-of-way or condemnation? Can I put up a fence? How much of my time will be wasted on repairs, vandalism, and cleanup? I hear how the city says they appreciate businesses, but in this case, you are driving them away. I hear the city say they appreciate legacy families like the Francis and Bee Gees families, but it really feels like you want us gone. I also realize that the city council members and staff not all feel the same way on these projects or the way the city is headed. So please know that I appreciate there are some who see both the pros and the cons of projects in the city's current direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that wraps up our general public comments for this evening. Council President, the consent agenda, please.
Yes, Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda. Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Hassan. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Duggar.
Yes.
Hartmeier Prigg.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Kimmy.
Yes.
Teeter.
Yes.
Tivnan.
Yes.
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. We are on to Agenda Bill 23118, the Mayor's Youth Advisory Board.
Good evening, council. It's good to see all y'all tonight. I'm very excited to be able to be here with a very intrepid group of young students. This is the Mayor's Youth Advisory Board. They're an incredibly diverse range of the young people that live in Beaverton and some of the most thoughtful young people, I think, that are in Beaverton. It's been exciting to be able to work with them since December, and they're gonna share a little bit about what they've been up to over this past year. So I'll leave it to Talit to take it on.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Talit. I've had the privilege of serving as the chair... Oh, I'm sorry. I've had the privilege of serving as co-chair of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Board for this past year. We're joined with our Board Secretary, Shrinity, and one of our board members, Shubangi. Tonight, we're gonna talk about, a little bit about the board, about the youth summit, which is an event we hosted, and some student feedback we got from hosting that youth summit. A little bit about our board, our role within government. We talk a lot with different community groups, different community members, like Friends in Cooper Mountain, THPRD, Metro, to get a better understanding about how our city works and how we can participate, different things like that. And our board meets the third Thursday of every month. We talk about different events that our subcommittees are putting on. We've had some community engagement this year, like the tree lighting ceremony downtown. We volunteered a toy drive there. We volunteered at the volunteer fair. And some of our board members even had the privilege of participating in the state of the city for this year.
Okay. Yeah, it's working. So we were able to bring the youth summit back to in-person events, which we were really happy about. This was one of the things we were gearing up for the whole year. And our goal was to inspire youth around the city to make positive impacts on the community and take advantage of available resources. We decided that one of the best ways to do that would be to invite other fantastic people to talk about how they're trying to make the city better. So we brought in Home Plate, an organization I'm sure many of us are familiar with, along with other really young people who are engaged in local government, like Danny Cage and people from the ACLU and OLCV to represent a really diverse set of viewpoints and to educate students on what all is possible when it comes to lobbying and working with local government. We had 50-plus students come, and we're hoping for even better numbers in the future. We have received student feedback, which is gonna be highlighted here soon. And we were able to introduce a lot of organizations to a lot of passionate students. So we're definitely considered a success considering that we were coming back from COVID times, which seems to be the theme for this year.
So part of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Board Youth Summit, we had the student feedback session. So this was basically a session where the participants of the youth summit provided their opinions and suggestions on important civic topics, such as environment and safety. So some of the suggestions for the environmental topic were that the Beaverton So some of the suggestions for the environmental topic were that the Beaverton government should prioritize energy-efficient buildings, and they should prioritize access to public transportation routes, especially routes focused on school times to make it more convenient for students to use public transportation. Along with that, they recommended to focus on vulnerable communities such as the BIPOC and homeless communities in Beaverton, especially since they are most impacted by climate change. And along with that, the students recommended to prioritize greenery for low-income communities. This is also a great way to provide heat protection as climate change is causing rising temperatures. And lastly, the youth recommended to support youth events like Reconnecting with Roots Summit.
Safety was another area that we received student feedback from. When asked about safety, students responded in mainly two groups, one involving city and one involving school. On the city side, students highlighted the fact that they would like to see more emphasis on long-term prevention over criminalization when it comes to our justice system. And then when we talked about safety in schools, students brought up SROs as one of the main points of contention, to no surprise here. Some students highlighted how SROs can de-escalate situations in modern areas outside of the school as opposed to within the hallways, and also how they would prefer trained responders, such as EMS, over SROs due to some of the lacking facilities inside schools themselves. Oh, conclusion.
Thank you all so much for your time and this opportunity. We really do believe AMYAB is a great way for the youth to provide their voice to the Beaverton government, and we hope to have more interactions with the Beaverton Council. Thank you.
Well, thank you for joining us this evening, and congratulations to all those graduating this week and off to college. Please continue to tell us your successes and come back and visit on your holidays. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Tonight, we have seven public hearings scheduled on the agenda. These include hearings of the city's proposed camping ordinance and on the city's budget. Visitor comment is the opportunity for the community to present information or speak on an issue that is neither on the agenda or not. If you wish to comment on matters ahead of us tonight, make sure you fill out one of these cards. So if you're sitting in the audience and wish to speak to us and have not filled one out, please let us know so we can do that. Okay. I will now start the public hearing portion of tonight's agenda. We will take the first two public hearings on the agenda at the same time because they are related to the same proposed annexation of a parcel on land located at 3835 Southwest 96th Avenue, and the two items are ordinance number 4842 and ordinance annexing one parcel at 3835 Southwest 96th Avenue and the adjacent portion of 96th Avenue, withdrawing this property from the Washington County Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District and the Urban Road Maintenance District, and adding the property to the West Slope Neighborhood Association Committee ANX 2022-0003, and ordinance number 4843, and ordinance amending the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map and Zoning Map for one parcel at 3835 Southwest 96th Avenue and the adjacent portion of 96th Avenue, CPA 2023-001/ZMA 2023-001. I now call to order the public hearing. Before we move into the substance of the hearing, I will ask the city attorney to cover some preliminary legal matters.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. I'm Robin McIntyre, Assistant City Attorney. The hearing will proceed as follows. After the preliminary legal matters, city staff will make a presentation covering both ordinances, and then members of the public will have an opportunity to speak for up to two minutes each about either or both of the ordinances. Finally, there will be a time for response or rebuttal to the public testimony by staff. Council members may ask questions of staff, applicants, or anyone else who testifies. Once all testimony is received, the mayor will close the public hearing and ask for a motion on each proposed ordinance separately. Any vote on the proposed ordinances will be taken separately as well. Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. If you've joined the meeting by phone, you can enter *9 to let the city recorder know you wish to speak. Alternatively, if you've joined this meeting online, actually, the first one, if you join the meeting by phone, I don't know if I said phone or online. But if you've joined the meeting online, you can let the city recorder know you wish to speak by clicking the raise hand feature. Now, I will cover the preliminary legal matters. As this is a land use hearing, there's a pre-hearing statement that's required. The applicant has the burden of proving that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, Comprehensive Plan, and any applicable Beaverton Code provision. The criteria that must be addressed in this hearing are Metro Code Section 3.09.045, Beaverton Development Code Chapter 40.97, and Beaverton Comprehensive Plan Section 1.5. Any testimony that speakers present must be directed at these criteria or at some other criteria in the code or comprehensive plan which the speaker believes should apply to this decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. In addition, failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issues precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Only those who submit written comments or give oral testimony will have standing to appeal this decision. At this time, I'd like to ask if any council members have wished to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest or bias. Okay, let the record show, there were no responses. Do any council members wish to report any site visits or ex parte contacts? Okay, let the record show, there were no responses. Does any member of the audience wish to question the impartiality or ex parte disclosures of any council member? Let the record show, there were no responses. Does anyone wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the council to hear this matter? Okay, let the record show, there were no responses. Mayor, that concludes the legal matters. You may proceed with the hearing.
Thank you. Please proceed with the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Steve Regner, Senior Planner with the city of Beaverton. The items before you tonight are the Southwest 96th Avenue annexation, comprehensive plan, and zoning map amendments. There are functionally two questions before council tonight, the first being, does the city council support the requested annexation? And the second question being, does city council support the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and zoning map amendments associated with the annexation? The proposal requests to annex one parcel located at 3835 Southwest 96th Avenue. The annexation request is owner-initiated, and the lot is currently developed with a single-family detached home and accessory structures. The owners have submitted the annexation request in order to redevelop the property. Due to the availability of utility services in the area, the site must annex into the city to redevelop. The annexation proposal also includes rights of way of Southwest 96th Avenue, which is the minimum right-of-way to connect the site to the city boundary to the north on Southwest 96th Avenue, adjacent to Southwest Canyon Road, as shown in the bold blue line on the image on your screen. If approved, these properties and rights of way will be withdrawn from the Washington County Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District and the Washington County Urban Road Maintenance District, and they will be added to the West Slope Neighborhood Association Committee. The annexed areas will remain in the West Slope Water District and will not be served by city Beaverton Water. There are comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments associated with this annexation request. Currently, the subject parcel is owned Washington County R5. The requested comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments propose to apply the lower-density neighborhood land use designation and the residential mixed-sea designation to the zoning map for the parcel and abutting right-of-way to the center line of Southwest 96th Avenue. These designations most closely correspond to Washington County's land use and zoning designations, as reflected in the Beaverton Comprehensive Plan, Table 1 of Section 1.5.2 of the Comprehensive Plan. The remainder of the annexed right-of-way in Southwest 96th will be designated with the Washington County interim zone. As the proposal is consistent with Table 1 of Section 1.5.2, the request qualifies as non-discretionary annexation-related comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment. As documented in the annexation staff report, and the comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment staff report, and the associated exhibits, the requests meet all applicable approval criteria. The proposed annexation meets the criteria of Metro Code for an expedited annexation, and the comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments meet the thresholds to qualify as a non-discretionary amendments and meet the applicable approval criteria of the Beaverton Comprehensive Plan and Development Code. Therefore, staff recommend that city council adopt an ordinance annexing one parcel of land, the abutting right-of-way of Southwest 96th, and additional right-of-way of portions of Southwest 96th Avenue. Staff also recommend that city council adopt an ordinance applying the lower-density neighborhoods land use designation and the residential mixed-sea zoning district to the subject parcel and abutting right-of-way. This concludes staff presentation. I'm available to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Council, any questions of staff tonight?
So as we annex Southwest 96th, only a portion of that is going to be in the city of Beaverton. How will we go about maintaining that? As far as, like, I'm presuming the urban county fee will pay for part of it, for the part not in Beaverton, but do we coordinate with them? Like, how do we make sure we're maintaining that road?
So there will be coordination with Washington County in identifying where the city jurisdiction stops. This is actually one of the reasons why we annex the entire width of the right-of-way and not just the half-street, because that really complicates things. So by taking the full width of the right-of-way, that does simplify, but there still is coordination with Washington County where, you know, north of a certain part, the city will be maintaining, and south, the county will be maintaining, but it will be the full width of the street.
Do we know, my second question is kind of the part of that. Do we know if there's any upcoming maintenance that will be needed for that road?
Every time there's annexation request, staff does analyze the current infrastructure, and there were no issues identified for this road segment.
Thank you.
All right, this is the portion where we hear from the public. Is there anyone, city recorder, wishing to speak on this public hearing?
No, Mayor, there is not.
Thank you. There appears to be no members of the public who want to speak on this matter tonight. We'll move on to comments from staff. Does the staff or city attorney have any further comments or clarification regarding this application?
Staff have no additional comments.
No additional comments. All right. Does any council member have any questions for staff, including legal counsel? All right, seeing none, this public hearing is now closed. The council should first take up the annexation application ordinance. Then, if the annexation is approved, the council can consider the application ordinance or the zoning and comprehensive map plan amendments. For the annexation, the council may either approve the application and adopt the proposed ordinance or take other action. If other action is proposed regarding the ordinance, the motion must include specific direction as to what other action we are taking. Is there a motion related to the annexation application and ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. I move to approve application ANX 2022-0003 and adopt an ordinance annexing one parcel at 3835 Southwest 96th Avenue and adjacent portions of 96th Avenue, withdrawing the property from the Washington County Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District and Urban Road Maintenance District, and adding the property to the West Slope Neighborhood Association Committee, ANX 2022-0003.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Hussin. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote on the motion. Would the recorder please call, vote by roll?
Counselor Dugger?
Yes.
Kimmy?
Yes.
Hartmeier Prigg?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Teeter?
Yes.
Tivnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you. Now that the annexation has been approved, the council may either approve the zoning and comprehensive plan application and adopt the proposed ordinance or give specific direction to take other action. Is there a motion regarding the application and the ordinance? Does a council member wish to comment or make a motion?
I wish to make a motion, Mayor.
Please do.
I move to approve applications CPA 2023-0001 and ZMA 2023-0001 and adopt an ordinance amending the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map and Zoning Map for one parcel at 3835 Southwest 96th Avenue and adjacent portions of 96th Avenue, CPA 2023-0001, ZMA 2023-0001.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Hussin. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay. Seeing none, will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Dugger?
Yes.
Kimmy?
Yes.
Hartmeier Prigg?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Teeter?
Yes.
Tivnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted, seven-zero.
If you'd like to appeal this decision, you must appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals in accordance with Luba's rules and any applicable provisions in the Beaverton Development Code. Okay. Thank you. Next on our agenda is a public hearing on ordinance related to prohibited camping and adopting Beaverton Code Chapter 5.18, amending Beaverton Code Chapter 9.08, and repealing Beaverton Code Sections 5.05.117 and 5.05.118. Thank you for joining us tonight for this important policy conversation. We are here tonight to decide about an update to the city's ordinance, which is the meat and potatoes of what your city council does. And while all of our city ordinance impact our community, the subject matter for tonight involves a wide spectrum of emotions, complex challenges, and differing perspectives. We are here today not just because we are required to be, which we are, but because we want the very best for our community. How we respond to HB 3115 might be uncomfortable or even contentious to discuss, but it is within this discomfort that we can evolve and grow as our community and create an environment that supports all residents. Whatever you are feeling tonight, anger, sadness, frustration, guilt, your feelings are valid. We are a community of compassionate individuals, and we are here to ensure the rights, safety, and dignity of all of our community members. Tonight, we will hold the potential to affect change, inspire understanding, and shape policies that reflect our commitment to one another. It will not be easy, but by working through these challenges together, we can find a path forward that upholds our shared values of compassion, fairness, and mutual respect. As a community, we are not okay with homelessness happening in our city. We are each feeling the impacts differently, and we have different ideas about what to do next, but I think we can all agree that this is unacceptable to have people living on our streets. The work we are doing here tonight will not solve homelessness. It will be a meaningful step, and one we're legally required to take. For those of you testifying tonight and those who have submitted public comment, thank you for participating in this public policy process. The decisions before council are immensely important, so we will continue to need concerned citizens speaking up to guarantee that the city is on the right track. All of us, council, myself, and all of you, our concerned residents in attendance, want the very best for our community. While our concerns deserve to be heard, let's commit to treating each other with respect, grace, and empathy. I now call to order the public hearing. Before we move to the substance of the hearing, I will ask the city attorney to explain how people can participate.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Kirby, city attorney. Tonight's public hearing will begin with the staff presentation about the proposed ordinance. When staff concludes their presentation, council members may ask clarifying questions related to the information in the presentation. After the questions and answers between staff and council conclude, the mayor will call on individuals who wish to speak about the proposed ordinance to provide public comment. With regard to the opportunity to provide public comment, anyone wishing to speak at this hearing who is not present in the room should follow the instructions included in tonight's agenda. You can let the city recorder know that you wish to speak either by clicking on the raise hand feature if you are online or pressing the *9 on your phone if you're listening through the telephone. Each member of the public who speaks at tonight's hearing has up to two minutes to speak. When you speak, please give your name and state whether you're a Beaverton resident or a Beaverton business owner. After each person finishes speaking, council members may ask questions of that speaker. When all public comments have concluded, the mayor will ask for a motion regarding the proposed ordinance. During council deliberations, council members may ask staff or legal counsel any questions that are helpful to their deliberations about the proposed ordinance and its provisions. If any council member wishes to offer an amendment to the proposed ordinance, that can be done during council deliberations. That's all, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now go ahead with the staff presentation. When staff finishes the presentation, council members will have the opportunity to ask questions of staff after we hear from the public.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Cia Lindstrom. I'm your interim assistant city manager. In 2021, the Oregon Legislature adopted House Bill 3115. It no longer allows local jurisdictions to ban camping outright on public property. Instead, we must meet new requirements. Instead, we must meet new requirements for camping for those experiencing homelessness. I want to leave you with three highlights before we dive into the meat of our presentation. First, as the mayor mentioned, this is required of us by state legislature. It means we must modify our ordinances related to camping by July 1, 2023. Second, this only applies to public right-of-ways and city properties. It does not regulate activities on other properties, including private property. Third, the camping exemptions proposed in this ordinance only apply if and when alternative shelter is not available. So two of us will be presenting tonight. In addition to me, you'll be hearing from Grace Wong with the city attorney's office. We also have a team of knowledgeable staff in the wings, both in person and virtually, who will serve as resources for us as needed. So next slide, please. So this is an overview of our staff presentation for tonight. In addition to reviewing the legal framework and the background and general information about HB 3115, we'll also review the timeline before diving into specifics of the draft ordinance. At the end, I'll do a quick summary of our engagement activities before turning it back to you to consider possible action tonight. As a reminder, this is the second of two public hearings scheduled on this topic. The first public hearing was held May 16, 2023. And with that, I'll turn it over to Grace.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Grace Wong, Assistant City Attorney here in Beaverton. I'm here this evening to write the legal framework and background, orient us to 3115 and the proposed timeline, and provide information on the draft ordinance as it's presented in your packet, and answer any remaining questions that were raised from the May 16 public hearing. So first, to start the legal framework and background, you've seen a version of this in the last public hearing, and that says, really, the Eighth Amendment in federal case law have said that, with limited exceptions, governments cannot criminalize the acts of sleeping with basic bedding if there is no alternative shelter. And turning to Beaverton in particular, there was an ordinance that prohibited camping that was adopted by city council about six years ago in 2018, and that said that there was no camping allowed at all times on the public right-of-way. Enforcement was then handed to the BPD Bike Team, who then works in consultation with city prosecutors to enforce cases. Now turning to House Bill 3115, as Sia alluded, this is now codified in ORS 1953530, and that again says that all cities and counties who have camping ordinances need to ensure that they are objectively reasonable as to time, place, and manner with regards to persons experiencing homelessness. And again, that takes effect or becomes operative July 1 of this year. You've seen a version of this timeline as well, and now we're here in June, and we are in the second public hearing, and we will need to have this ordinance adopted before July 1, 2023. So since the last public hearing, what you have in your packet in Exhibit 2 is what staff had heard from most counselors was one they would be okay with. And that means that in your packet, it says that it will be an 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM timeframe for permitted times for camping. It has a 500-foot buffer for safe parking sites, shelters, property where homelessness services are provided, schools, or daycare centers, entrances and exits to a freeway. So it's one 500-foot buffer, a uniform buffer for simplicity's sake for enforcement. I also heard that a 50-foot buffer for intersections was okay, as well as a 10-foot buffer for fire hydrants. And I also heard that the ancillary code sections on intoxicants and no storage on personal property was also okay by city council, and so that's what's in the current draft in Exhibit 2. However, there were still some questions that were raised in the May 16 council meeting, and that's the three questions that I have presented in this slide. And one was to explore an earlier end time for camping, like 7:00 or 7:30, and provide the associated costs with implementing either of those options. The second question was to explore adding a 500-foot buffer around the Tri-Met Max stations. And lastly, it was to explore increasing the buffer to 1,000 feet for the year-round shelter managed by Washington County. And I'll take each one in turn in the next few slides. For the first one, explore an earlier end time for camping, like 7:00 or 7:30. There is no additional enforcement costs for the earlier end time because BPD Bike Team starts at an earlier time. However, there is a mandatory briefing that the bike team has to take. On average, it lasts about 30 minutes, but they can't guarantee that it will do so every single day that occurs, so they might not be able to get out onto the streets exactly at 7:00 or 7:30. It just depends on what the briefings are and the time. There's also a few, if any, alternate locations for people without alternative shelter to keep warm and dry at 7:00 or 7:30, so that is why staff also still has the 8:00 AM timeframe for enforcement, still in that current draft ordinance in Exhibit 2. The second question was explore adding a 500-foot buffer around Tri-Met Max stations. City staff looked at the Max stations within city limits. There are six Max stations. In most instances, there is either private property or THPRD property abutting those Max stations. So a 500-foot buffer for sidewalks and streets around those Max stations would unlikely prevent camping because it only allows, it only regulates, again, public right-of-way and city property. Property owners and THPRD have their own processes, they have their own processes for excluding individuals on their properties, and so really, including this 500-foot buffer around Tri-Met Max stations would be unlikely to help enforcement in this area. The last question on exploring increasing the buffer to 1,000 feet around the year-round shelter managed by Washington County. We looked at the existing proposal for 500-foot buffer around the year-round shelter, and we found that there's already additional coverage due to the nearby buffers of the Highway 217 to A exits and entrances, and there's another buffer for the safe parking site around Griffith Drive. So increasing that buffer to 1,000 feet around this shelter would not cover too much more sidewalk and street, aside from a small portion on the southwest corner of Southwest Griffith Drive. So staff is still recommending a 500-foot buffer for the year-round shelter. Lastly, we heard in the last public hearing that council was interested in a future check-in, and so we have in our ordinance an annual report that's required to be given by the city manager, and the report will include the following categories. Financial assistance offered by the BPD Bike Team, the referrals made to other agencies by that same bike team, the warnings issued, the citations issued, vehicles impounded, the numbers of all of those categories, the number of persons arrested under the ordinance, and any challenges faced by BPD about enforcing this ordinance. So all of those categories that will be covered in that report to city council in 12 months' time. And now I'm going to turn that back to Sia for a discussion on the city's engagement efforts.
So in our last public hearing, you had some questions for us around communication and public engagement, so I'm going to do a quick summary of the public engagement that's happened so far and the plans for future. So first, in terms of the engagement that has been done, community feedback was sought through a bilingual city survey that was done in April, and findings from that survey are summarized in your packet. We also did outreach specifically with people experiencing homelessness through our winter shelter, both printed and online surveys, and we did have 16 people responded to that, and results from that are also in your packet if you'd like to see those. We also held outreach sessions with business community, homeless service providers, and our neighboring jurisdictions to get their feedback. As you know, one of the requests you had was to align as much as possible with our neighboring jurisdictions, so we've been trying to stay in touch with what they're working on. Engagement that's currently going on, we're updating the FAQ sheet, which we have added to as we've had more questions come in, and it's now available in English, Spanish, and Korean. We also have BPD and our city prosecutor hosting information sessions, tools for businesses in particular around trespass and trespass agreements and those tools that are available for them. Thank you. In the future, we are going to continue distributing additional information after the ordinance is passed. Last time, you did ask us to focus specifically on non-English-speaking businesses, and BPD and the city prosecutor has done that already and is beginning to do that engagement with businesses as we go. They will also continue to be available for businesses who have questions and need assistance in that. We will continue distributing the translated FAQs and update the city's website as we Last time, you also asked for information on behavioral health resources, and just very briefly, because this is a topic we could spend a whole lot more time on, but I did want to highlight two things. First, Washington County's Mental Health Division and the city work closely at the city's municipal court. We have an employee who is a master's-level clinician on site there as part of our Behavioral Health Court team, who provides referral resources and mental health evaluations. We're also looking forward to Washington County's opening the new Center for Addictions Triage and Treatment, or CAT. You may have heard that acronym before, and that's projected for 2024-25. So we're looking forward to that. It will have site in both Beaverton and Hillsborough. So possible action tonight. At the close of this public hearing, you can adopt the draft ordinance, either as it stands or with amendments if you wish to do so, or you could specify future action to be taken regarding the proposed ordinance. And with that, I will turn it back to you all for questions you have of staff.
Counsel Teeter?
Yeah, thank you, Sia. I've got a question about the addiction treatment center that the county's starting. Can you expand on that? What's that supposed to look like here in Beaverton? Do we have any update on locations or services? Like, how long will people be allowed to stay there? What's the referral process for that like? Like, how do people get connected to those services? Can you just expand on some of that?
Yeah, just a tiny bit. The site in Beaverton is going to be at the old WACCA site, which is on Evergreen, if I'm remembering correctly, and will be focused on inpatient treatment services. The site in Hillsborough, I'll have to get an address for you on that one, and will be focused more on outpatient services, but the two obviously will work together. We can get you a more detailed briefing on that, and I know we provide pretty regular written updates from Washington County. They've been really great about providing information on those services.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great. I'm curious about how people get connected to those services, like, is it contact with our outreach teams or our contracted organizations that support our work? Or do people just go there themselves and they say they need help? I'm curious about learning some more of those details, but I'm excited about it.
You've got it. We'll forward that to you.
Counsel Hussin?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, and this might be before, because it said 2018. It sounded like PD is like the enforcement. Is that, has that always been, or just why PD?
Curious. The enforcement of the camping lives on one of the slides, right? So why PD?
So Beaverton Police is the primary form of contact, and they are, this is a specialized team that has been trained on the Ninth Circuit case law, and they're outside the calls for service, and so they can spend that time with people experiencing homelessness and getting them the resources they need. So when we constructed this, we wanted to make sure that this was to the police team that really could handle this because they were well-trained and equipped to handle people in crises.
Thank you. Next question. I think I know the answer to this, but I'd love just to put it on record. I know that there are some jurisdictions that are doing like specific sites, and I know you have talked to us in the past about why that wouldn't make sense. Could you talk a little bit about that? Yeah. Yeah, the question about having designated camping sites is a complicated one. There's a couple of pieces related to that. One, figuring out where the sites are is extremely difficult, and I know some jurisdictions are juggling that right now. The supports you'd need to put in place around that can also be complicated and expensive, and our goal is ultimately to get people sheltered rather than still outside. Awesome. Last question. On the times, and I'd be curious what other jurisdictions are doing, like sunset and sunrise at different times of year, has that been something that's come up in your conversations? It has, because one of our partner jurisdictions was considering that for a while and has moved away from it. I know, and if our BPD folks are in the audience, we can talk a little bit about some of the enforcement issues. It's just a little more complicated as part of the feedback we had. So if that's sufficient, okay.
Lee Dunn. Counsel Tivnan?
Thank you. So there's this note that is made in the annual report that we'll be getting that says it's going to capture referrals that are made, and within that, is that going to capture referrals made to shelters?
Yes.
Or only to others? So it will be all of the successful sheltering that was done for individuals in addition to telling them where they can or can't camp, if there is an option for that? Would it include that?
Yeah, so I'm going to turn to Captain Mastropoleto to make sure that we have. See here. The question about whether the referral to shelters is specifically in the bike team report is something I can get back to you on. I don't have that from memory. They provide a really good extensive summary of, yeah, I thought he might come. Yay. They provide a good extensive summary of the referral to services that they do, and I'll let Captain talk to this.
Yeah, so the bike team keeps a list of resources available throughout the county, everything from private.
Is that there? I'll start over. So the bike team keeps a list of resources throughout the county to include public, private, state, be it VA components, and they do a good job of trying to identify individual needs, get to know the individuals, and then they start to offer basic resources. So we'll offer clothing and food, and then we'll work their way up to maybe job placement, get them in contact with goodwill, if it's resume services, if it's housing components, we'll send them out to maybe the Hawthorne Center. We've coordinated with Behavioral Health Court and Whitney, and we just try to document each individual person that we deal with on a long-term basis, almost like a case management, if you would. We've been successful in getting people reunited with their families. We've been successful in getting people into jobs. We worked with Reasers in the past recently to get someone who was on the street into kind of a day labor position that turned into a full-time position. We've had some resources to get folks into shelter, be it short-term at one of the motels for a period of time to bridge the time between being on the streets and getting their first paycheck. So it's a total wraparound service that the bike team provides, and they just kind of keep an ongoing record of who they contact, what services they give, and what the success rate is.
Perfect. Yeah, and the foundation of why I asked that in addition to all of that, which, thank you, that was a great explanation, is early on, I think in the March work session that we had, there was some questions around what the term alternative shelter really means. Is alternative just within our city limits, or can we partner outside of that, whether it's with the county or neighboring municipalities, or even neighboring counties? And there was some question around that. I know the mayor's been looking into it. I don't know if there's anything from that where we have clarity around that yet, but I think being able to track, was there any shelter available, is going to be really important for us, because I'm trying to think, worst-case scenario is we're stuck with it being our city limits, and even though our shelter that we're going to be building is going to be very helpful, it has a limited number of beds, and I doubt that it's going to be able to shelter everyone who might need those services. So I say that for people listening, too, that this isn't about just telling people where they can or can't be. The ultimate goal is that we've got something for them anytime that they're approached on the street to help them, including shelter. So getting some definition around that, and if there isn't any, being a part of the solution to creating it is something I'm deeply interested in.
Our referral system is much stronger because we are part of a countywide system. You know, congregate shelter is not appropriate for everyone. The fact that there are alternative shelter options for people, including we see pods coming online more and more often across the county, those kinds of resources are appropriate and important so that we make sure that people are able to get to the services that are most appropriate for them. So being part of a countywide system is a really important piece of this.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Duggar?
Yeah, thanks. I have a couple of questions, and I'm thinking about the timing. We've heard consistently about, from businesses, that this is a challenge, particularly early. So my question is, I don't know if it's maybe for you, we've largely put the We've largely put the enforcement mechanism on the Bike Police, and I can see where that would be a challenge early. But we also have patrols all night in just normal, right, like car patrols. Could they assist, you know, in that first hour, right? Is there, is there something we could do? Hopefully, this isn't a problem, and people are in shelter, and this is not a thing. But I'm just trying to think, like, through the operationally, is that, would that be incredibly disruptive?
No, the challenge with utilizing the overnight patrol staff. I'll use this morning, for example, there was an overdose next to the 7-Eleven right by the police department. It took several officers to respond right at about 6:15. So they're giving life-saving aid to an individual that just overdosed on fentanyl. Those are the calls that come in during those shift changes. So to put an absolute guarantee that the graveyard shift could coordinate this and make that commitment to council and our citizens and our business partners wouldn't be fair, because we can't dictate what the next call is going to be in the queue. Whereas the Bike Team being pulled away without needing to respond to those calls can devote the time necessary. But they don't hit till seven.
So, so it could be done. There would just be situations where we couldn't guarantee that, sort of like a speeding law, right? Like, we say the speed limit's 60, but sometimes people go 65.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. And then my second question is, not necessarily strictly about this ordinance, but kind of informs the way I think about it. In the past, we've had, we've empowered particular Bike Police with budget to, for hotel vouchers and things like that. Is that still ongoing, and is that still part of the program, and do we still have money for that? Because I think that would be, that would help me sleep a little better about some of this.
Sure, we did as a last, as a last budget cycle, like the individual I mentioned at Reesers. We come across an individual who was down on his luck and just needed a bridge. So we paid for a hotel room for a couple of weeks, got him a job, turned out full-time. So we kind of do a needs assessment. It isn't a lot of money that they had available to them, so they're very kind of, they make sure they spend it wisely. Because it is that kind of that gap between someone we can save today before they start going down the path of getting called in as a trespass or needing to do shoplifting to survive, so we'll get them food. So we just kind of, kind of play it by ear. Sometimes we'll use it to get Goodwill gift cards so they could go buy clothing, to empower them to kind of own something versus giving them something. So that's kind of what they use it for.
So there's like a case management triage kind of model there. There's not enough for everything, but we can, where it would be most effective, we still have those resources.
We try. We try to make sure that we're spending it as wisely as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. I do know that there's been a lot of interest with the council on adjusting the hours. And one of the hour sets that we have talked about was changing it from nine till 7:30 to accommodate shift change. That's something you guys could accommodate if the council wanted to make that adjustment tonight.
Yeah, generally, for most cases, briefing would be done by seven. So I can't guarantee that it'll always be done by seven or that the calls for services won't dictate that they all need to go somewhere else. But 7:30, I don't think would be too much of a burden.
Awesome, thank you. We're going to move. Any more questions of the staff? Okay, we have quite a stack of visitor comments for this and the next hearing. So I'm going to call up three people at a time, and then three people on deck. That front row will be for our three on deck. As a reminder, there's a two-minute limit on our public hearing tonight, and I ask that you respect that. So up first three is Alicia, Rhonda, and Keith Haxton. And on deck in the first row will be Angela, Alex, Heather, and David. Before you start speaking, please introduce yourself. Let us know if you're a resident of the city of Beaverton. Thank you.
Alicia Burmey is President and CEO of the Beaverton Area Chamber and resident of Beaverton. We'd like to acknowledge that the passing of this city ordinance is not your choice, but required by Oregon state law. It's unlikely that everyone and perhaps no one will end up happy in the end. We hope that we are moving towards a Beaverton where there's a bed for everyone, as everyone deserves to be safely housed. We also ask you to remember this is a balancing act between compassion for the rights of our houseless neighbors, our housed residents, and additionally, our business owners that have rights to protect. We believe that it is the case that our trained law enforcement officers in Beaverton now approach the homeless in pairs for self-protection. Please keep in mind that many of our business owners do not have that same luxury as they self-police their businesses and their private property. Finally, we are concerned that 8:00 AM is too late to allow camping. We acknowledge the budget deficit that Beaverton is facing. However, between children heading to school and businesses opening, 8:00 AM is quite simply too late, and we do recommend the 7:00 AM time.
Thank you. Rhonda?
Hello, everyone. Rhonda Reister, Beaverton Round Executive Suites Asset Manager on behalf of the city. So currently, I represent 105 businesses. And we recently, we have our Downtown Association and we have our Beaverton Chamber of Commerce, but there's a lot of us that aren't members of either, or we don't fall into the jurisdiction of the Downtown Association. Therefore, we launched the Central Beaverton Business Association. So we now have the CBVA, and you will hear more about us. And we just are really excited about having all of our business voices represented here in Beaverton. Just on a positive note, I did submit my public comment, my letter, with photos of things that we've been experiencing for the last couple of years, right here at City Hall and in this downtown community. So I know that we're all in a place of time that, here in Beaverton, where tough decisions have to be made. Accommodating a law that none of us were at the table to deal with or to create, but yet we need to deal with it. And then in addition, a $10 million shortfall that our city has never experienced, at least in the 20 years that I've been a resident and business owner here. So we all have to make sacrifices today, and more than ever, we need to support each other. As Mayor Beatty said earlier, I really appreciate that. We have to navigate through these challenges together. So I also want to say that please don't let fear stand in the way of doing the right thing for you, for each of your own integrity, and for our community. As our elected officials, that's your responsibility. That's why we put you in office. If you're choosing to make right decisions that will benefit our community and to its greatest potential, especially when we're going through a difficult time, then your community is going to stand behind you. I personally will stand behind each of you. And I've spent time with you in the last couple of weeks, and I really appreciate and value that more than ever. So, Central Beaverton Business Association will have our second public safety meeting where our officers, Lieutenant Sheer and Prosecutor Greg Brown, will be there to explain the nuts and bolts of what we're looking at with this new ordinance. That's June 13th, from 10 to noon at the Bee Gee Plaza on Cedar Hills Boulevard. So regardless of the outcomes tonight, I will remain confident that we will all be working together so we can sort of support each other to get through this.
Thank you. Keith?
Do I need to press a button? That doesn't sound like it. Hello, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Keith Haxton. I am a Beaverton resident for about the last eight years. I am Legislative Assistant in the Oregon Legislature, but I am not here in that, speaking in that capacity today. I'm here today speaking as a resident of Beaverton, a disabled veteran, and a formerly homeless person. I'm not representing businesses or homeowners, but the homeless people who are going to be most directly impacted by these laws. I just want to say that nobody likes to be homeless. Nobody likes homelessness in their community. But these laws don't solve that problem. They don't make anyone any less homeless. They actually make it more difficult for people to exit homelessness. I was here a few years back in 2018, speaking against the implementation of these anti-camping laws, as they're known. And I'm here today speaking against their expansion. Unfortunately, what's being proposed here today is not just adopting or adapting to the state law that was passed, 3115. It's also expanding anti-homeless laws. And so I'm asking you, if not to vote against this whole package, please vote against those expansions. As I said, anti-homeless laws like this are ineffective. They don't make anyone any less homeless, and in fact, they tend to make them more homeless by destroying their shelter, giving them fines or arresting them. At best, these problems are pushed away to other cities, other counties, which then have to deal with them. And at worst, they, these laws cause people to be excluded, isolated, and in the worst-case scenario, cause people to die. Because that's what happens when you take away a vital human need. So what causes homelessness? It's not actually drugs or mental health. The vast majority of people with major mental health problems and substance use problems are not homeless. The thing that causes homelessness is housing not being available and affordable. These anti-homeless laws are also costly. Sweeps cost money. People don't stop being homeless when they're swept, when they're removed from their residence. They, at best, go somewhere else and sometimes just end up having to camp in that exact same spot again. They're not any less homeless just because you don't see them. Jails are more expensive than homes, and homelessness is already a punishment. Adding to it is cruel. Many homeless people have jobs and incomes, are suffering health emergencies, are sometimes just being unemployed because their employer left the area. They have health, there might be a pandemic or an economic downturn that causes people to lose their housing. I'm just going to try to wrap this up. The solution is not enforcement. It is housing. Over the last 30 years, public housing has been divested from, and one of the options that this city could be choosing to solve this problem is a thing called inclusionary zoning. I urge you to explore that and please adopt ordinances such as inclusionary zoning instead of exclusionary police policies. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your service, Keith.
Thanks.
Angela, Alex, and Heather. David, you're on deck. Are you ready?
Okay. My name's Heather Harrison. I've been a Beaverton resident for 25 years and a Beaverton business owner for 15 years. And when I hear you talk about this as shelter, as a solution, I don't think it's shelter that we're looking for. I think this is not a housing issue, but how we care for the mentally ill and the drug addicted. I happen to be a licensed professional counselor, a licensed marriage family therapist, and I have a doctorate in transformational leadership, which is how we transform individuals and transform our communities for health and wholeness. And I hear you talking about care. And if we're going to care for these folks, we need to care for their mental illness, and we need to care for their addictions. There are several studies out there, one recently out of UCLA, that says the majority of people living on the streets are dealing with a mental health issue or a substance abuse issue. If we look at some of the stats, most of them say about 40% of people living on the streets have an issue with alcohol abuse. Another 30% or so have an additional issue with some sort of drug addiction. So if we're going to care for these people, we need to look at wraparound solutions for them. Camping, just like the last gentleman said, does not help them. It perpetuates their problem. It hurts them. We need to look at caring for these people instead of enabling their addictions.
Thank you. David Anderson, Alex De La Rosa, Angela Anderson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city councilors. Thank you for being here in person. It is appreciated. My name is David Anderson. I'm a member of the Beaverton community and a co-owner of Syndicate Wine Bar located at 12620 Southwest First Street. I am personally neither for nor against House Bill 3115. I'm rather speaking as a business owner and husband with concerns for the community that has become my home away from home and how unconsidered implementation of House Bill 3115 could negatively impact my business and those of my immediate neighbors. I love Beaverton. I've lived here for 25 years. I've spent the best and worst years of my life here. I can't imagine getting through it without the friends, colleagues, and community in my life, some of whom are in this room tonight. Please place yourself in the shoes of every small business owner in our community when I say this. We have been directly threatened by numerous transients trespassing and vandalizing our business, and in one case threatening the life of my wife and co-owner. They also threaten to destroy our business. Houselessness is a problem. No one at Syndicate Wine Bar disputes this. However, we first have a responsibility to our employees, then our guests, then our neighbors, and then our community as a whole before we can spare any resources to consider the needs of the houseless that under House Bill 3115 will have a legal right to camp directly in our midst. It is no secret, we have previously shared concerns about the First Street Dining Commons as an unmonitored and unlicensed alcohol consumption zone set up and currently operated by the city of Beaverton in direct opposition to the OLCC and which, since its inception, has led to numerous alcohol-related incursions upon Syndicate Wine Bar's OLCC-designated and regulated service boundary, thereby threatening our operating license and hence our livelihood. Given that the city of Beaverton has declared the First Street Dining Commons effectively a community park, one operated under temporary city operational guidelines, but not a formal park that would fall under regulation by THPRD, we now have additional concerns as to how implementation of House Bill 3115 could impact this poorly managed and operated public space, particularly given that unmonitored public consumption of alcohol is permitted within that space and activity we have witnessed countless times by transients at all hours of the day. As House Bill 3115 permits the overnight camping of houseless individuals when shelter is unavailable, and as the city of Beaverton is considering approval of such overnight camping between the hours of 8:00 PM and 8:00 AM, we as representatives of the First Street business community urge the city to please consider the impact of permitting such rules and how they may impact the First Street Dining Commons and how inaction will impact many businesses, starting with our neighbors across the street whose doors open to the public early in the morning while public camping will be permitted directly outside their door. We therefore urge the city to declare the entire First Street Dining, First Street District, excuse me, around the commons as an exclusion boundary forbidding overnight camping for the safety of all that work, dine, shop, and live in that community. Otherwise, it stands to effectively become an unmonitored 24/7 bar legally frequented by transients. Regardless of city decisions regarding our concerns, we also urge our business neighbors to contact the Beaverton Police Department to register their business space as a no-trespass zone, which was recommended to affirm the rights of our businesses to operate without threat by transients who in the past year have become increasingly aggressive and threatening to all in our district.
Thank you.
We care about our small business district, but we don't feel the city cares about its small business community as much as it should. I know some of you do. All of you need to. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jennifer Nye on line. Are you wishing to comment on tonight?
Yes. Sorry about that. I'm on my phone. Jennifer Nye, I am the Central Beaverton resident. And I just wanted to respond to this fast comment about the 500-foot boundary. As a point of reference, the Central Beaverton Transit Station is only 200 feet from Rose Bee Gee Avenue. And so a 500-foot offer would make a significant difference. I have to admit, I am split on my opinion of this, but I did want to make it clear that 500 feet does make a significant difference in that urban transit area. And I also wanted to thank all of you for your service. It's a really hard job, and really hard, and it should be.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, council, are there any questions of the speakers? Seeing none. City recorders, are there anyone else wishing to make comments tonight?
No, Mayor, there are not.
Based on the public comments received, do any council members have questions of staff or legal counsel? All right, seeing none. Do you have a question?
Yeah, just quickly regarding that First Street Dining Commons.
Speak into the mic.
Sorry. So the First Street Dining Commons is kind of still in flux. And we haven't quite decided, I think, the permanent future of it. But it does seem like it's a, it's a public space, public plaza, park. Most of our parks are controlled by THPRD. I don't know if we have a policy that would...
But it's public, it's, it's city property, so this would be impacted, correct?
Okay, so the First Street Dining Commons is actually included as city property, and so no one can camp at all times. camp at all times on city property, so it would be an area where no camping would occur.
Including the sidewalks?
No, it's just the First Street Dining Commons.
Okay. Yeah, it might be useful to get some clarity on that, but further. But I don't think that's the thing for tonight. Maybe it's we're just continually discussing the First Street Dining Commons and what its permanent future will be.
Can I ask a follow-up? Sorry, can I ask a follow-up question to that, though?
Yes.
Sorry, I was just like thinking of what you said. When we're talking about Beaverton city property and that camping is prohibited on that property, who's required... Like, the BPD is enforcing that, correct? But does it require a phone call? So if there is someone on the prop... in First Street Dining Commons, it's... Someone has to call, correct?
Just from a strict understanding of your question, it wouldn't necessarily require a call. Most of the time, yes, it would be a call, but a police officer could self-initiate, see something, and say, "That doesn't seem right," and make the first contact.
Okay.
Yeah. But I would agree that the majority of the time, it's probably someone calling the police and then them responding.
Okay. Thanks.
Counselor Kimmy?
Just a quick follow-up to that. Because it's a city-owned property, then it's... Then you're going to have 500-foot buffer zone around it? No?
No, there's no buffer for the city property restriction. It's only on... You're restricted from camping at all times on city property.
Okay. All right. I will now close tonight's public hearing. Before we begin deliberations, we need a motion to either adopt the proposed ordinance embodied in Agenda Bill 23121 or take some other action. If council members have an amendment they would like to make to the proposed ordinance, those can be done once the main motion is made and seconded. We will take each proposed amendment one at a time. If an amendment is moved and seconded, we will discuss the proposed amendment, then vote on it. Then, once the proposed amendment either carries or fails, we will then consider the next amendment in a similar fashion until we're completed.
Mayor, I have a motion. I move that the council adopt the city ordinance embodied in Agenda Bill 23121, an ordinance relating to prohibited camping and adopting Beaverton Code Chapter 5.18, amending Beaverton Code Chapter 9.08, and repealing Beaverton Code Sections 5.05.117 and 5.05.118, and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Duggar? Okay?
Is that now, or do we... Okay. I move that the council amend Section 5.1.050 and Exhibit A of Ordinance 4841 concerning time regulations, so that subsection reads, "A person without alternative shelter may camp between the hours of 8:00 PM and 7:30 AM. After 7:30 AM, a person without alternative shelter must dismantle the campsite and remove all personal property from the campsite."
Does that meet legal?
Yes, it needs a second, but yes, that's a good motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We'll take discussion on this motion.
I'll go first, just because it's... I don't like any of this. Like, it's terrible all around. I hate that we, you know, that we are in a homeless crisis, that we have been in a homeless crisis for years, and we are still here. But I also, as a resident of Central Beaverton, as someone who frequents the many coffee shops, I think a lot about my neighbors that run the small business, and people have asked for 6:00 AM. People have asked, you know, for us to go earlier. I hear our police that we're going to task with enforcing this, and this seems like... I don't think any of us are going to like this. I don't think any of us are going to like very much of this, at the very least, and so this is a balance for me, a balance of what we're asking of our police, a balance of what we're asking of our small business community, a balance of what we're asking our house's community to endure. I don't like any of it, but this seems like a good starting point for me, and that's the best I can do.
Council President?
Thank you, Mayor. I support the motion to amend to the stopping, like, for the enforcement to begin at 7:30 AM. We've heard a lot from our community members, a lot from our business owners, a lot from our parents, and, you know, just people that are out and about in Beaverton. I wholeheartedly agree that this is not the solution. This is part of a bigger body of work that we are doing as a city to work towards solving homelessness in the City of Beaverton. Our shelter is another piece of that. Our active involvement in helping get affordable housing built in the City of Beaverton is another part of that. This is one of the tools. I have a lot of compassion for people experiencing homelessness, and I think it's really hard for us to not speak in generalizations. Not everyone who is experiencing homelessness is experiencing it for the same reason. And in speaking with the judge about some of the enforcement tools and whatnot in the ordinance, we need also to have various tools in the toolbox. We have heard from our bike team about how infrequently we actually use some of the more punitive measures of enforcement. We really do try to work with outreach and give people the care that they need. So this is kind of a long-winded answer to why I do support this amendment, but I do also want our community to know that this is just a piece of the puzzle for us and that we hear you, and also that we see the people on our streets experiencing homelessness, and we're really trying to find the best balance that we can for our entire city.
Thank you. I do know, I've heard from a few of you this week about wanting 9:00 PM instead of 8:00 PM, and so the way that we're taking motions, it would be great to hear if you were wanting 9:00 PM before we vote on this motion, because we would have to... If that was somebody's future motion, we would have to vote this down and then make a new one, so I just kind of want to hear where people are with that, too. Counselor Hussin?
I just want to kind of extend a moment of the importance of the humanity that we're talking about. Like, we are stuck in between a rock and a hard place, to an extent. Like, we know that this is a crisis, and I have so much compassion for people who are experiencing... That are dealing with houselessness. And this feels, at best, fairly a Band-Aid, and I do hope that our staff and our county and through as many partnerships as we are able to, we're able to have more coordinated responses around this. I will support this amendment, though I would be open to the alternative. I do want to take a moment and say, like, to folks who are suffering, like, we hear you, we heard you. To our businesses, we hear you, we heard you. Some of you, at least for me, we're hearing from for the first time, so I want to make sure we keep that dialogue going. We do want to make this the best place to play, work, and live for all of our communities, and I think that we're trying to do the best we can with what we have now, so thanks.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yeah, thank you for putting this forward. I think when we first started, we were talking 6:00 AM, back in maybe January, March, and it's moved on, and obviously, as others have said, we're not... We're probably not going to get this perfectly right the first time, and we might have to go back and revisit. Every single city might have to go back and revisit because every single city is having to do this. And we'll probably learn some things from other cities, because we all seem to be doing it slightly differently. The way that I'm landing on this is, we are coming up with all sorts of solutions and potential future solutions for our homeless community members, but we have virtually none for our businesses. And I have heard from many residents who have had very scary encounters, children trying to make their way into buildings for dance class, things that are occurring that are making it hard for folks with disabilities to use our sidewalks. We had an officer here in Beaverton get choked out and almost die. I'm not saying that to demonize the folks that are experiencing homelessness in our community, but to just recognize that it is extremely complex, and there are folks that need help, but our businesses do as well. So I support this. I also support extending it to 9:00 PM, knowing that 8:00 PM is a very busy time on our sidewalks, especially around First Street Dining Commons and other areas where we have a lot of congregation around restaurants. I think that the dining hour is essentially done by 9:00, or at least really cleared out, so to me, that makes sense.
What do other people think? Counselor Teeter?
Yeah, thank you. I know staff have put in a lot of time. We've had a lot of one-on-one conversations over the past several months. We've had several work sessions as a council, and this landing spot where we are right now is a lot of compromise throughout that process. It is very challenging. I could see myself supporting the 7:30 start time. I would have a hard time supporting the 9:00 PM end time, just because it can get very cold, especially in the wintertime. Maybe if there's a seasonal change, but then that gets just... That gets really confusing, and my fear is that this code is already confusing for people who won't be very familiar with Beaverton boundaries and the different regulations and distances. But I think we've got a good start with where we are here. And so I could go with the 7:30. I'd have a hard time with the 9:00 PM. As some other people have... Some of the fellow colleagues up here have said, "This is part of the puzzle. It's not the solution." The solution is more housing. The solution is Washington County Treatment Center that's in development. Like, that's really exciting, and we got to do this because the state's making us do this. That's where I am right now.
Counselor Kimmy, get in on this.
Yes, it is a complex issue. I do actually have business, and I live in downtown area, so I see what's happening. It affects all of us. As a small business owner, I would actually support 9:00 PM to 7:30 AM, just because all the businesses close around 7:00 or 8-ish, and then they all open up around 7:00 also before 8:00 AM. So I think we have to... Yes, this is not perfect. We probably have adjustments coming along, but in the beginning, I think I am more comfortable in 9:00 PM than 8:00 PM.
Counselor President, are you 9:00 or 8:00?
I think hearing from our business community and hearing Counselor Tivnan, that balance, right, that we need in our city, I would be supportive of changing this to 9:00 PM.
Counselor Duggar?
Is there a possibility of doing seasonal, seasonal, like, changing? Because I think about winter is very different in Oregon than right now. Like, 9:00 PM might even not be early enough right now. People are out and about, but winter, you know, is kind of dark by 5:00 PM, so is there a possibility of us doing 9:00 PM in the summer and then 8:00 PM in the winter? Is that... Because that would be the compromise to me. I don't know. That is a compromise. Or a compromise, sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah. Counselor, Mayor, I... Legally, yes, you can do that. It's going to make it more complex, and then we need to think about what dates, and that would be changes that I'm not sure I want to make on the fly tonight to figure out what would be the appropriate way to do this. It is something that... I think everyone understands from staff and legal that we'll be revisiting this ordinance most likely to fine-tune it, and this would be some topic that, informally, I don't want to change the ordinance as it's drafted, but we could come back with, "How's this enforcement on time working?" as part of that report that was talked about earlier.
So I guess I can live with 9:00 PM, but I would like us to look at that in the future of moving it to 8:00 PM for summer, if that makes sense.
Could we do an amendment to the motion now and just make it 9:00, or do we need to vote it down and make a new motion?
I... I'll tell you, the cleanest way to do it is...
Tell us the easiest way to do it, Bill.
Clean is good. Vote on this motion if you think that you have... And then if it doesn't work, it fails, then the next motion is 9:00.
Okay, cool.
And that's the cleanest way to do it, and it'll be the fastest, I promise, in the end.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yeah, I had taken that into consideration, but I honestly think we might actually find ourselves with more shelter through emergency shelters. We'll only have a certain number of beds in the permanent one, and when we have weather events, heat waves, we're still going to do everything we can to open up additional space for those who need it. So I... And if we are finding that that is not the case, then I'm willing to go back and revisit it and change those numbers to ensure health and safety. But that's something that gives me some confidence in going for it tonight.
Counselor Hussin?
So to clarify, in a couple minutes, we'll be voting on the 8:00 PM, but enough folks want to move to 9:00 PM, so we'll vote no. I just want to... I did want to... We don't need to address it today. Like, I do think seasonality feels like an issue that we need to be thinking about in the future, so I just have a note to myself, like, when we talk about that quarter... That yearly report, like, making sure we're really thinking about understanding, like, the complexities of, you know, 5:00 PM is dark, you know, in the winter, and so what does that look like, and what does that mean?
And I do... We have already directed staff to come back at six months, and so that will be winter. We could make an adjustment to that. So friends, this is what needs to happen. We're going to vote on Counselor Duggar's amendment. If you want it to stay 8:00, vote yes. If you want to come back to 9:00, vote no. So will the city recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Duggar?
No.
She's just stunned by that.
Kimmy?
No.
Hartmeyer Prigg?
No.
Hassan?
No.
Teeter?
Yes.
Tivnan?
No.
Beatty?
No.
Motion fails 1 to 6.
Can you reread your motion?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I move that the council amend Section 5.18.050 and Exhibit A of Ordinance 4841 concerning time regulations, so that subsection 1 reads, "A person without alternative shelter may camp between the hours of 9:00 PM and 7:30 AM. After 7:30 AM, a person without alternative shelter must dismantle the campsite and remove all personal property from the campsite."
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Hussin. Any discussion on this motion?
I'll just chime in really fast, but I am going to be voting no on this one because the 9:00 PM date is alarming just because of the wet weather and fear of it being really cold and dangerous for people, but I would love for this to be a really key part of the review that we get back in six months.
City Recorder?
Mayor, who seconded that motion?
Counselor Hussin.
Okay. Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Hartmeyer Prigg?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Teeter?
No.
Tivnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Motion carries 6 to 1.
Great. All right. Huh? We are now ready for a vote on the motion. Adopt the city ordinance embodied in Agenda Bill 23121, an ordinance related to prohibited camping and adopting Beaverton Code 5.8, amending Beaverton Code 9.08, and repealing Beaverton Code Sections 5.05.117 and 5.05.118, and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Thank you. It needs a motion.
Just a moment. I just want... As I listen to that, I don't think that you said "as amended."
Okay.
So that's the one thing.
As amended.
There, now you can second. If someone asked...
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, "as amended." Can we now vote on the motion?
Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
Kimmy?
Yes.
Hartmeyer Prigg?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Teeter?
Yes.
Tivnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted, as amended, seven to zero.
Awesome. Okay, we are going to be taking a fifteen-minute recess. We'll be back at nine. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on Resolution four-eight-four-zero, a resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year commencing July first, twenty twenty-three, making appropriations and determining making and declaring ad Volarex tax levy as provided by O R S three-one-zero dot zero-six-zero-two. We have experienced a lot of instability over the last few years, from the pandemic to the contentious elections, to the war in Ukraine, to inflation and high interest rates. It's been a lot. Americans want and deserve stability in their government, and Beaverton is no different. The debt ceiling crisis at the national level and walkouts right here at the Oregon Legislature have given us reasons to doubt whether we can trust elected decision makers. According to twenty, according to a twenty twenty-three poll, only one in five people in this country believe in the federal government's ability to make the right decisions. But at the local level, almost three-quarters of Americans have faith in their local government. The good news for us seated at this dais, the bond between public officials and residents is built on trust, a belief in our ability to make decisions that benefit our community both immediately and in the long term without bias or ill intent. We as elected officials know that this trust is earned by providing transparency in government, by being open and accountable to the public, and by assuring the long-term stability of the community. This trust is invaluable, especially in times of crisis, and we as Beaverton City Council pledge to uphold it. Tonight, we have a chance to prove that we as your city councilors are worthy of that trust. The actions that we take here tonight will shape the future of our city for years to come. The decisions we make around the budget this year are likely some of the most difficult decisions we have made as elected leaders. The tension between our budgetary constraints and the desire to maintain services that are clearly important to our community is challenging. I want you to know that any reduction approved is not a reflection of the value we place on these programs. Instead, they are a testament to the complex reality of the fiscal situation we are navigating. We have to right the ship. We don't take these decisions lightly, but we commit to making these hard decisions together in order to stabilize our government. You deserve stability, and we will continue to earn your trust by delivering for the Beaverton community. For the next item, I will open up the public hearing on the budget, and we will hear a short presentation from the city's finance director on the budget as approved by the city's budget committee. I will open the floor to any comments from the public on the budget. And at the conclusion of all comments, I will close the public hearing, and the council will begin deliberation on proposed Resolution number four-eight-four-zero. I now open the public hearing on the uses of the state shared revenue and the city budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four. Before I go further, I will address how to participate in this hearing if you are listening or watching remotely. If you've joined the meeting by phone, you can enter star nine to let the city recorder know you wish to speak. Alternatively, if you have joined the meeting online, you can use the raised hand feature to show that you wish to speak. Each member will be given two minutes to speak on tonight's hearing for a maximum of two minutes. We will first hear a short presentation from the city's finance director, Debbie.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Did you want to say? Okay. I do have a short presentation, if you'll put it on up there for me. So tonight, as the mayor said, we are holding a public hearing for you to adopt the operating and capital budget and approve the use of state shared revenue. So on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, the budget committee approved the fiscal year twenty twenty-three twenty-four operating and capital budgets and the use of state shared revenue. The approved budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three twenty-four is approximately four hundred and sixty-five million dollars. It's comprised of several funds, which include the general fund, library fund, street fund, water sewers, storm drain funds, and our capital funds, and there are many more. The proposed general fund budget is a little, what's approximately a hundred and five million dollars. And in order to balance the budget, we did need to close a ten million dollar shortfall in the general fund. The library fund is budgeted about, it's twelve point three million dollars. And in order to balance the library fund budget, we needed to close a one million dollar budget shortfall. We did that through mostly structural changes and some use of library fund reserves. So the proposed state shared revenue, we propose to use our state shared revenue of a little under three and a half million dollars in the general fund that composes of state liquor tax, state cigarette tax, and state marijuana tax. And then in the street fund, we receive state gas tax as a little under eight million dollars. We are eligible to release, receive state shared revenue because we provide, the requirement is you have to provide four out of seven listed services. And you can see that we actually provide five of those seven. So that's police protection, street construction and maintenance and lighting, sanitary stewers, storms, storm sewers, and planning and zoning. So the benefits for you adopting the budget is, and approving this use of state shared revenue is, the state shared revenue does provide the resources that we need to, that are necessary for our city operations. And the budget actually provides the plan and the resources for us to continue operations. So with that, staff recommends the city council approve the use of state shared revenue and adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-three twenty-four budget.
Any questions of our finance director? All right, I will now open the floor for comments from the public. Public on how the city's proposed use of the state shared revenue and city's budget as appropriate. As a reminder, you have two minutes to speak, and I'm asking for compliance to two minutes. We have over forty cards here tonight. So I will call three at a time and then three on deck. So up first, because I do know we have somebody with a child, Amira, will let you go first. Shabangi, Mark Holliday. Up at the dais and on deck will be Kate Arnold, David, and Mackenzie Ross. All right, friends.
I'm Amar, I'm five years old. I'm Amar and I'm five years old and so it I don't think we should take away our library books, money, and money from the library because, well, books are important to kids like me. And well, well, it's very, and books are very important to humans like me and humans all, the rest of the humans all around the world. And I'm, what I'm basically saying is we don't want our books taken away. And don't take my library books. Kids around the world will cry a lot.
Perfect.
And well, and well, well, this is, and this is Emily, there's Grandma Lori, and my daddy, and my sister, Annika.
Thank you for joining us tonight, friend.
No, I, I'm not done yet. And so, hey, don't laugh. Hey, don't laugh. It's just like, our sign says, don't take my library books. I will, I'll cry a lot.
Thank you.
That's what it says, and well, well, this is against, and
uh, don't worry. Yep. Don't worry, the vice mayor is five, and I would not be able to claw her away from a microphone either, so, Shabangi.
There is absolutely no way I'm topping that. Okay, sorry. First, I'd like to highlight that we wouldn't have pride today without the fight against police violence. Today, I've come to speak on two issues within the budget, the Y S O program within the B S D and CERT. Both programs are different branches of our local justice system, both opportunities for progress in the right direction. We just heard from M Y A B about students wanting a more restorative justice system, one more focused on preventative measures rather than reactive. At least four of you on the council today campaigned on restorative practices and police reform, but this budget demonstrates anything but. CERT is and should continue to be evidence of the city moving towards a more just, towards a justice system that places as much emphasis on restorative practices as it does on reactive ones. If you approve this budget, you will be cutting the staffing of this program in half. And while I do understand that the city is in a tough spot financially, the fact that this is an evidence in the police budget shows me that there may be money to spend. If we can cut library hours, there may be enough room in our police budget to at least retain one more staff member on CERT. The second part of the system that I would like to talk to you about today is the Y S O program. This week, every councilor here will be sent a letter detailing how the draft I G A for this program was created and why this I G A is unacceptable and cannot be passed on June twentieth. In a better world, I'd be advocating for the money being spent on this police program to be spent on nurses or social workers. But for today, I must settle to ask you to demand an I G A that meets the recommendations provided to you and the district by sea change. Four of you here campaigned on the fact that you're tired of the constant minimal reform. I ask that you adhere to your statements. If you truly want to respect and celebrate the communities you highlighted in your proclamations, you must preserve CERT, and you must vote no on the Y S O I G A come June twentieth. Again, relevant information on the Y S O program will be sent to you this week. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mark Holliday, Kate Arnold, David Bennett. And on deck will be Mackenzie Ross, Lori Snyder, and Chuck Quality.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Kate Arnold, a full-time volunteer. My favorite saying is, "The best use of our time is on things that outlast us." And as an aging, almost sixty-five-year-old, I say that in the last fourteen years, I've had seven operations. If you, I say if you were to see all my scars, sagging skin, invisible veins in a movie where I was naked, it would be rated R, not for sexual content, for scary content. On the positive side of aging, I now have a Medicare card. And more importantly and more seriously, my kids are grown and take care of themselves. And now that I'm off council, I have a lot of time to volunteer with a wide range of what I call altruistic teams, groups where we're trying to do things for the safety and for the future of our community. Because again, what time I've got left on this planet, I want to spend using that time and energy to make our community as safe and ready for the future, both for our children and the members at large. As a person off council, I had to walk my talk. Counselor Beatty has heard me talk about the need for disaster preparedness. I've joined CERT, I got my ham radio license, and I'm working with our community. We're already seeing a lot of need for things, heat shelters, there's a new one. Who's staffing it? CERT. The BERT is really growing too. They've redone the radio station at the Public Safety Center with upgraded stuff like Windlink, so they can now send email-type data to other emergency groups via the ham radio frequencies. And they do a lot more that I think Mark was, is going to talk about. But communication and being there when something happens, we can't do it after the fact, it's too late. We've got to have enough support because we, as BERT and CERT members, have to answer to emergency managed people, people who are trained and have the certification to lead us. And then we will also be there for when things really happen. And I'm really concerned if you don't hold on to at least those two positions, it's not going to happen. We're going to see a degradation in the services, not only that we're providing, but how ready we're going to be when that thing happens. And one last thing, when I was on council, I went to one of our cell carriers and I said, hey, what happens if the grid goes down? What happens if there's no energy? They said they have enough for three days. So basically, cell phones will be open, but probably overwhelmed, and then it'll be gone. If we do not have a radio team that can communicate with our volunteers and with our, our Public Safety Center, we're going to be in trouble.
Hello, my name's Mark.
Hello, my name's Alex.
Well, my name's Mark Holliday. I'm the director of the Beaverton Emergency Radio Team. I volunteer. I moved back to the city of Beaverton in two thousand and sixteen after a twelve-year absence, and I maintain law practice, and I've done that since ninety-seven here in the city. When I moved back, I joined Beaverton CERT. Two years later, Beaverton BERT, if you will, stood up, and I joined it as well. And this began my program with the radios. The deputy, the emergency officer within the emergency management office, has traditionally written grants, and that is where BERT has gotten all of its equipment. And so if you want to have effective radio volunteers, you need to equip them with radios. We have, as kits, we can set out in the field if need be. Without funding, we can't maintain those. We have antenna on the roof of the Public Safety Center that we didn't used to have. Without those, we can't transmit or receive signals. Kate was just alluding to part of this. The biggest thing that happens if the budget is followed is that position's permanently eliminated. And although we'll be fine for a while, eventually our equipment will degrade and will not be replaced. Now, you can ask for the volunteers to give some equipment, some have. Actually, you can't ask that, that is a violation of funding laws. But there's no way that a volunteer is going to be able to put a radio up on a roof. Likewise, BERT and CERT, because I'm a member of both, as I indicated in my letter, augments the response, the responseability of the city by leveraging the manpower. So for every person you have volunteering, you're free of city staff. For example, BERT not only does the ham radio response, it also is there to help city staff, whether it's Water Bureau, whether it's whomever, we can monitor all the radio frequencies and provide communication links, thus freeing up city staff to go what only city staff can do. When you're considering the budget, I would urge you to keep the two positions, maintain the funding, help the city's ability to respond, be where it is, if not improved. Thank you.
My name is David Bennett. I am a thirty-five-plus-year resident of the Beaverton School District. I am an emergency management volunteer, and my current assignment is the volunteer supervisor for the Beaverton Community Emergency Response Team. This month, the Beaverton Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, volunteer organization is celebrating its twentieth anniversary. It's grown to over five hundred active and reserve people, trained, vetted, led, and prepared to safely serve themselves, their family, their friends, their neighbors, and their community in disasters when professional first responders are not immediately available. In those twenty years, we've worked with Beaverton Police, TVFNR, Beaverton School District, and many other agencies, churches, and businesses. We have served on senior walkaway incidents, neighborhood gas leaks, student reunification exercises, cooling and warming shelters. This summer, we're working with Washington County to map the heat islands in our community to better plan the responses to excessive heat. As a community service and to hone our skills, we have helped with many community celebrations and events. At each event, we provide a non-law enforcement calming presence, gentle crowd management, find lost children, look for potential problems, and build a level of trust with B P D. Throughout the entire twenty years, we have thrived from emergency management oversight, from that guiding hand. From that guiding hand, we have handbooks, policies, procedures, and most importantly, a clear picture of where and how we can best serve as volunteers. CERT volunteers do not self-activate or self-deploy. Our direction, be it an event or disaster, comes from emergency management. They approve our scope and assure that the volunteers have the needed resources and coordination with other emergency responders to provide the best results for our community. The primary assignment for emergency management staff is to be the focal point for the coordinated city response in incident and disasters, and also the focal point for the coordinating efforts with county and state response and recovery plans. These are government requirements for adequate coordinated emergency response. Failure to meet those requirements means Beaverton is on its own when bad things happen. And bad things do happen. We have begun November with ninety-degree temperatures, and we are already seeing urban brushfires that we're trying to deal with. FEMA guidelines direct that an emergency management office should have a three-deep command capability, and right now, we're driving towards being one deep. Uh, okay, it is, is now the time to abandon a staffing model that has worked well for twenty-plus years? Beaverton needs and deserves an effective emergency management program.
All right, thank you.
Cannot afford to be without it, and must meet the fundamental needs for an adequate level of professional emergency management staff to obtain it.
Thank you. Okay, Mackenzie Ross, Lori Snyder, Chuck Quality, on deck Claudia Steiner, Hannah McAllister, and Kate Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Mackenzie Ross, and I'm speaking today as the Union Secretary for SEIU 503 Sublocal 198. I'm also the branch librarian at Murray Shoals, and have been with Beaverton City Library at Murray Shoals for nearly seven years. Based on my unofficial layoff notice last month and my official layoff notice preemptively scheduled for tomorrow, this will change. During my time here, I have tirelessly advocated for Murray Shoals, both as a library location and for its staff. Some might call me a broken record, yet here I am again. When I was hired in 2016, I was excited to serve in a smaller branch library because of the community we create and foster while also having access to the greater powers of Beaverton City Library, Maine, the City of Beaverton, and WCCLS. Murray Shoals might not have a makerspace or study spaces, but our staff get to know our patrons. And our patrons appreciate the option of coming to a smaller and closer location and getting to know us in return. By cutting our open hours down to four days a week, which no other library in Washington County does, and completely gutting our staff, you would be destroying the community that our staff have built over the past thirteen years. We have supported booming population growth in South Beaverton, and we've also endured local tragedies, remote work and curbside service during peak COVID, and an unpopular staff reorganization. And yet, many of the staff have remained optimistic about the present and future. Again, with a heavy, yet hopeful heart, I urge city council, Mayor Beatty, and city management to take a closer look at the budget to see where else we can cut or reduce costs without so severely impacting the Murray Shoals branch and losing the community that we have helped to create. Thank you.
Hello. Hello, my name is Lori Snyder, and I am a proud member of SEIU 503 Sublocal 198. I'm currently a library assistant two with the City of Beaverton at the Murray Shoals Library, and I have been with the city for ten years. Tonight, I want to share with you the gross pay that the library positions proposed for layoffs earn compared to library management. Staff who have received unofficial layoff notices are largely library assistant twos who make nineteen sixty-five to twenty-six thirty-three per hour. These are often part-time positions, and at twenty hours per week, their annual income is twenty thousand four hundred and thirty-six to twenty-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars. One full-time library position at Murray Shoals is also proposed to be eliminated, and their hourly pay is twenty-seven thirty-six to thirty-six sixty-six per hour, or fifty-six thousand nine hundred and eight to seventy-six thousand two hundred and fifty-two per year. All of these staff regularly directly interact with the public, recommending and checking out books, helping patrons access library technology, leading storytimes and programs, and more. Meanwhile, our managers earn eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight to a hundred and nineteen thousand two hundred and sixty-three per year, and our director makes a hundred and thirty-two thousand three hundred and thirty-four to a hundred and seventy-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-four per year. Please keep in mind that our citywide ratio is one manager for every two-point-three-one staff. By reducing the management COLAS for those in salaries grade eight and above, you could allow many of the direct service staff targeted for layoffs to keep their much-needed jobs and thereby allow the Murray Shoals Library to continue to provide service to the public for more hours each week. I ask that you consider that.
Hi, my name is Chuck Quilty, and I'm here as a proud member of SEIU 503 Sublocal 198, also a proud employee at the Beaverton City Library. I appreciate the opportunity to be heard today. Contrary to some folks' understanding, the library is not simply a collection of books, movies, music, and other materials that can be checked out by a self-check machine without human involvement. The library is more than that collection of items for checkout. The library is the people that make a huge array of services, programs, and resources available for everyone in our community. It's the people, the talented and passionate library workers, that make the library possible. It's the people that make sure all of the materials in our collections are available in good shape on the shelves and accessible to everyone. It's the people that work hard to ensure that everyone has a place where they are welcomed and safe to spend time enriching themselves, finding resources, or being entertained. It's the people that are there to answer all the questions, like what to read and where to find it, how to print that important document, how to share photos online with friends, how to learn more about your family tree, where to get help with housing, and so many more. And if we don't have the answers you need, we'll help you find them. It's the people that provide programs that help new immigrants become citizens, help folks learn digital literacy skills to function and survive, help folks to express themselves through poetry, music, storytelling, and art, help folks to share clothing, toys, games, and more through community swaps, help folks to come together for meaningful conversations, and that list could go on. It's the people here at the library that provide the space and the means for us to be part of a thriving community. I've heard that the reason the library is slated to lose so many staff is that the biggest part of our budget is the people. And I'm sure that's true, but there's a reason. The library is the people, far more than it's the collection of materials. Taking away those people, those committed, talented people, will inevitably diminish the library and along with it, the community that we serve. I've watched over this past year as positions after position has been left vacant. It's, uh, the rest of us continue to take on more and more, working hard to provide that same service because that's what we're excited and passionate about. And I've watched as stress levels and overwork have dragged folks down as we try to keep up with that ever-increasing workload, and now we're talking about cutting even more people. We are not expendable. I'm asking you to prioritize people, prioritize community, and find a way to keep the library funded and fully functioning.
Claudia Steiner, Hannah McAllister, Kate Taylor, on deck. Sarah Vanderly, Lisa Stellar, and Adam Korst.
Oh, is that me?
Yep.
Claudia Steiner Fricker, Beaverton resident, nine-year, full-time, emergency management volunteer. A lot has been talked about BERT and CERT, as it should be, but I'm here tonight to talk to you about the program that I directly supervise, and that is disaster preparedness outreach and public education for emergency management. As supervisor, I report directly to the emergency manager in liaise with the emergency officer position that has been cut. We are an integral part of the, three of the four phases of emergency management, which is mitigation, preparedness, and response. The programs that we bring to, to Beaverton residents are critical. Having the support and the resources to be able to continue this is essential. We face an uphill climb in, in getting this community prepared and resilient post-disaster. We have, we have the, the usual, you know, emergencies and, and that happen, but we're also preparing for the sleeping giant fifty miles off of our coast, the Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake, which, if you look at the data in the Oregon Resilience Plan, will, we, in the valley, we are predicted to lose water and sewer for a few months to a year. There is a lot to prepare for. And I am here tonight to ask the city to place a priority on emergency management. We are in the business of safety, and the safety of Beaverton residents should always be prioritized. And lastly, I am hoping that you will return to making preparedness a council priority, as has been done in the past. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Hannah McAllister, and I'm the treasurer for SEIU 503 Sublocal 198. The proposed layoffs and reduction of hours at the Murray Shoals Library would negatively impact the community by reducing access and services while putting future library funding from WCCLS at risk. Beaverton receives a majority of its library funding from WCCLS. The formula that they use to determine how money gets distributed includes circulation, open hours, and other service-related measures. How does this budget, that is cutting programming, hours, and staff, not put our continued WCCLS funding at risk? When asked if this would impact future funding, city management said that they did not know. These changes could decrease future WCCLS contributions and lead to more instability in the library fund. Will we be doing this exact same thing next year? In 2020, SEIU members took a reduced COLA to help the city balance the budget during a difficult year. Since then, we have seen that sacrifice be paid back by the city, continuing to try to balance the budget on the backs of represented staff. Tonight, you will have to make hard decisions that will shape the future of Beaverton. I ask you to consider what type of Beaverton do you want to live in? One that cuts early childhood programming, an LGBTQIA teen book club, and puts future library funding at risk? Or one that is welcoming community in more than just a slogan? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Kate Taylor, and I am a member of SEIU 503 Local 198. I'm here tonight in solidarity with Adrienne Corey, one of the Murray Shoals Library staff members who will be impacted by the layoffs amidst budget cuts, who will be sharing her statement with you. She shared the following. "I've worked in the library field for sixteen years and at the branch since 2015. I love serving this community by assisting patrons with our computers, library account questions, and shelving. Before my layoff notice, I decided to go back to school to earn my Master's of Library and Information Science degree to perform more effectively as a library assistant two, and possibly advance my career with this city. Now, I will be starting my third semester, and it saddens me to think that I will not be able to use this experience to benefit our library users. During the height of the pandemic, many of us at the branch helped offer an in-person service known as BCL To Go, including checking out materials and either placing them on a table or in the trunk of a patron's car before herd immunity was even close to being achieved. During this time, youth services staff at the branch also put together craft packets and library material bundles while providing remote services before people were allowed to come back into the library. Currently, besides offering materials and well-attended youth programs, we provide a climate-controlled, safe space during the day. We may not be packed every hour that we are open, but there is always someone using our space. From the very young, whose parent is giving them their first library card, to an aging adult, whose family member is picking out books with them. This space is treasured, and the closed days will have a negative impact on the people. Please reconsider laying off filled positions and instead find some other ways to meet the budget deficit and maintain the days that the branch is open to the public. Please put yourself in our place. What would you be feeling? What would you do? These are our livelihoods, and there has to be a better way. Thank you."
Sarah, Lisa Stellar, and Adam. And on deck, Francesca, Megan Cohen, and Jess.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. My name is Sarah Vandahe, and I'm a proud member of SEIU 503 Sublocal 198. I'm a children's librarian with the City of Beaverton, and I have been with the city for fifteen years. Many people think of libraries as storage space for books, but I'm here tonight to remind you of exactly what we provide at our Beaverton libraries. Not only are we a place where people can borrow books, but people can borrow movies, board games, STEM toys, pasta makers, mobile hotspots, yard games, and more. We have computers, Wi-Fi access, printers, copiers, scanners. Our staff are excited to help you with your new tablet, solve your account issues, and recommend excellent books. We're always happy to help you with research and finding high-quality books and articles. Our Murray Shoals programs include storytimes for babies, toddlers, and preschoolers, Maker Monday, and Fun Art Friday, Spanish Language Exchange, Writers Group, and Book Club for Adults, Teen LGBTQ Book Club, and additional programs for toddlers. In April, we averaged thirty-three people at our Thursday toddler programs, and we had thirty adults register for our April program, where we had someone share tips on outlining a novel or memoir. If the proposed budget passes, these toddler and adult programs would be eliminated. We urge city council to fund the library so that staff can continue these well-attended and well-loved programs. I don't think the budget cuts are being distributed equitably across the city, and the cuts to the library take away services to those in our community who most need them. Please don't make the community and frontline staff pay for the mismanagement by decision-makers. Will you please consider amending the budget to preserve jobs and open hours at the Murray Shoals Library so that patrons can continue to have access to this vital resource? Thank you.
Thank you very much for the chance to be here and, and talk about my concerns over the library. I'm a, I've been a resident of Beaverton for like twenty years, and the library is basically where I live. Monday night, I was at the Beaverton Library, where the Beaverton Song Circle is meeting for eight years. Several weeks ago, I was at the Beaverton Library for the Repair Fair. There were about two hundred people there. Before that, last month, I was there for the book fair that the Friends of the Library have, where I got tons of books for kids at the school I work at. Besides Beaverton, Beaverton Book Clubs, craft groups, story hours, and any number of community groups meet at the library, bringing people together, building community, that's what libraries do. They build community. Beaverton City Council and staff has put diversity, equity, and inclusion at the heart of their work and decisions. Libraries are the great community equalizers, where everyone, anyone, can check out a book, can use computers, can print, scan, do research, and find community resources. Everyone. And then, of course, there are books. It's where people come to the library to check out books and find information. I love seeing children carrying out armfuls of books, many of whom, the library is the only place where they can get these books. Story hours for children who don't get to read, don't get read to at home. Help with homework. I used to tutor at the Murray Shoals Library. Libraries build community. Please don't cut funding from, from one of the most valuable resources our community has. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and City Councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Adam Korst, the president of SEIU 503 Sublocal 198, the union that represents over two hundred and fifty employees at the City of Beaverton, and is part of a larger seventy-two-thousand-member union across Oregon. And while you see only a small percentage of us here tonight, I assure you that all of us are watching. of us are watching you. I'm here tonight, along with many of my fellow union siblings, in support of the eight library workers unnecessarily losing their positions due to a proposed budget that both devalues the incredible contribution of our workers, but also ignores the true value that both of our libraries bring to our community. You've heard and will continue to hear testimony throughout this process that highlights the hard work of these librarians, as well as the personal stories of some of those who will be affected by these cuts. I have met and spoken, at one time or another, to every one of you. I know that you've each come here with the same desire as these eight librarians and all of our union employees, to help make our small city an example for other cities. We recognize the hard choices you each must make tonight. I don't envy the positions that you're in, but I know that each of you has lived here long enough and invested enough time and energy into our community to know that balancing the budget on the back of our workers at the cost of a valuable resource to our community is not the same Beaverton we have been nor want to be. So my ask of each of you tonight: Do not do what is easy nor what is hard. Do what is right. Protect these jobs. Show our employees that their hard work and sacrifices have not gone unnoticed, and ensure that our libraries continue to help build the Beaverton we all want to see. Thank you.
Franciska, Megan, Jess, and then after that, we'll take testimony from those remote.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Franciska Elliott, and I'm speaking to you tonight as a proud member of SEIU 503 Sublocal 198, a Beaverton resident, and a mother of two young children in support of maintaining services at the Murray Scholes Library. I'm currently the Public Involvement Coordinator for the City of Beaverton. Having been with the city for over a decade, I've seen the ways this community has grown and changed in that time. The southern quadrant of our city in particular has grown exponentially during that period with the annexation of the Cooper Mountain area and continues to grow at a rapid rate. Based on census data, the total population for ZIP Code 97007, my ZIP code, grew from 66,954 in 2010 to 71,896 in 2020, a 7.4% increase. Beaverton School District's newest high school, Mountainside High School, up the hill from the Murray Scholes Branch, continues to be a highly sought-after high school in the district, attracting families from all over to own or rent within that catchment boundary. If we want this area to be an enticing neighborhood for new residents to move into, a fully operating and easily accessible library is a key amenity. And given all the resources that have gone into planning in the Cooper Mountain and South Cooper Mountain areas, not having a library that can serve the needs of that area is a disservice. On the days the Murray Scholes Library is slated to be closed under this proposed budget, for those that don't drive, especially as we continue to encourage alternatives to driving, this is an even bigger ask. The walk from Mountainside High School to the nearest bus stop takes 40 minutes and then requires another 30- to 45-minute journey on two different buses to get to the main library. We have to do better than that. Libraries are essential community services. I implore you to find a way to keep the Murray Scholes Library open seven days a week. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Megan Cohen, and I am here tonight as the Vice President of SEIU 503 Sublocal 198. I've worked at the city for 10 years in community services and cultural inclusion, grew up in Beaverton, and have lived in neighbor southwest for the last nine years. I'm a library super user who memorized her 14-digit library card number years ago, and I frequent the Murray Scholes Library at least twice a week. I gave birth to my daughter in December, and the library played a vital role in my healing as a first-time postpartum mom who was desperately struggling. The library was one of the only places I was able to visit in the first few months since it was close to home and easily accessible. I knew I could take my daughter there because of the children's space that always had other parents and young kids visiting it. For myself and many other new parents, the library is an essential service. I know from the work I do on a daily basis that the library is the only public place that provides a safe, welcoming space for folks that are experiencing poverty, have recently immigrated to the US, those without internet access, people experiencing homelessness, and for members of our community to be in community with each other. It is estimated that one in every five moms will experience perinatal mood disorders, and suicide is one of the three leading causes of death postpartum. Oregon received a D+ on the maternal mental health report card release this year. There's already so few resources, and this would be one more to lose. We know that community works, that access to information can save lives, and that people trust our librarians. Voters have made it clear that libraries matter to them. Please show us that it matters to you tonight, too, by continuing service hours and staffing at the library. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jas Mealy, and I'm a proud member of SEIU 503 Sublocal 198. I'm currently a reference assistant with the City of Beaverton, the Beaverton City Library at Murray Scholes, and I love my job. And I have been working there for 11 years. Beaverton prides itself on its excellent library services and how much the community uses and values the library. We're the third busiest library system in Oregon. However, let's look at how our city's investment in the library compares to our neighbor to the west, Hillsborough. The general numbers: Beaverton's population is about 97,020 square miles, and Hillsborough is at about 106,026 square miles. We each have two library locations, a main library and a branch location. Beaverton's libraries are currently both open 56 hours a week, whereas Hillsborough's libraries are currently both open for 64 hours per week. Beaverton's library budget for 2022 to 2023 was $12.4 million, and about 52.8% of that came from the WCCLS levy. Meanwhile, Hillsborough's library budget for 2022 to 2023 was $14.1 million, and investing more local funds, and about 42.4% came from the WCCLS levy. Essentially, this means that Hillsborough as a city is investing more local funds into its libraries in comparison to Beaverton. We ask that you take a closer look at the city budget to see how we can better fund our libraries here in Beaverton to show how much we value the library and the community we serve. And I also just want to say that I just saw TJ Kalun, who wrote The House in the Cerulean Sea, which you should all read, and he said that his library growing up saved his life. And I don't take that lightly. I think that he was very emphatic when he said it, and he said it on his website, too. And I just want to, I just always think about how many lives that the library has saved. Thank you.
Okay, we are going to switch to some remote testimony. Beth Gilbert, Elise, and Kristin are on deck. All right, Beth, you've been granted speaking access.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Beth Gilbert, and I am a proud member of SEIU 503 Sublocal 198. I'm a librarian with five years of service to the City of Beaverton. I'm also the staff liaison for the Beaverton Committee on Aging. I am saddened that the proposed budget will cut Murray Scholes Library hours by three days and cut eight library staff positions. You can't judge a library's value to the community simply by its books. According to Pew Research Center, 90% of Americans age 16 and older said that the closing of their local public library would have an impact on their community, with 63% saying would have a major impact. This is because the library is a vital resource. I've seen firsthand the social and economic devastation of the pandemic. The library has been a beacon of light for people during dark times. It is a refuge for marginalized groups in the community. Library staff are ad hoc social workers and navigators. We assist people in figuring out the complexities of life, from navigating the health system, legal system, accessing government forms, filling out job applications, and being a safe space for those with nowhere else to go. Our programming reflects this role in the community. We provide connections to health, housing, literacy, STEM learning, and so much more. Every program we provide opens the door for someone in our community to learn, grow, find connections, and resources that they weren't even aware existed, to make their lives better and their family lives better. By cutting staff and hours, you are sacrificing the community's opportunities to have a safe space and have personal help in whatever their need is. We are often used as a point-of-need service, so closing our doors three days a week does have big consequences. I want a future in Beaverton where its libraries are flourishing, well-resourced public spaces. I want a culture in Beaverton where library staff are recognized as necessary team members to this city, and the city does whatever it can to keep its teammates. It is the right thing to do for people who have committed their careers to helping others, and even more so, the right thing to do for the community. Thank you.
Elise?
Hi, my name is Elise Broward, and I have been a social worker in Washington County for 10 years. I currently work with the Washington County Department of Housing and have worked at numerous community mental health organizations over the years. The community doesn't understand what a vital resource the library is to the city as a whole. As a social worker, working with high-risk clients, I utilize the library as a resource on a regular basis. I send clients to the library for community engagement, for computer access, and most often just so they have a safe space to be. The library is the only public space consistently available to the people I work with where they are welcomed and allowed free shelter. Community organizations are overwhelmed, and shelters are scarce and open limited hours. The City of Beaverton has no day centers in operation. Branch library services are especially important because the vulnerable individuals in our community have limited transportation options, and many can only go as far as they can walk. Our public libraries act as our most consistent social service centers, and cutting service hours and staff positions will have a negative effect on the system as a whole. This meeting started with a proclamation about LGBTQ recognition, but this budget proposal will eliminate the job of the librarian who organizes the LGBTQ Teen Book Club at the Murray Scholes Library. Libraries are our partners in community resourcing, and they are honestly already not equipped to provide all the services we demand of them. We ask a lot of our libraries and the people that staff them, and there are currently no adequate alternatives. Cutting library funding and resources would be a shameful error on the part of the city. Thank you for your time.
Kristin?
Hi, my name is Kristin Doe, and I won't rehash the points that I already previously made in my emails to the City Council members, because I value your time. However, I do want to highlight a few more things, that it is not just the librarians who are going to be impacted by this situation, and that the community is standing with them. You discussed current and future well-being of the community as being of high priority. Cutting staff and the budget at the library will harm both the current and future of Beaverton. All of the moms on our Monday Story Group agreed how much we miss storytime when it was on break for two weeks and how we all struggled so much more. A fellow mom texted me yesterday, excuse me, I got three hours of sleep last night, that Mackenzie was losing her job, and we were so shocked because she's been so upbeat this entire time, that we had no idea. What makes a library such a welcoming place is the staff. So, those proposed cuts aren't going to be just less books and less resources. It is really ripping the heart out of community spaces that are so vitally important to people who are struggling. I know that this budget shortfall is going to be a very difficult path ahead of you guys to face, and that there is no easy choices. I just ask that you don't take the path of least resistance and approve the budget as it is proposed, and rather seriously reflect on if there's any other options out there, knowing how much this will impact the community. Thank you.
Jill Adams, Peter Melanier, sorry, I'm totally butchering that, and Megan Rasmussen on deck, Jennifer Wolfe, Ariselli, and Daniel.
Mayor, my name is Jill Adams. I'm a proud member of the SEIU 503 Sublocal 198. I'm a 21-year reference librarian at the Beaverton City Library, Maine. May I urge you to find amendments to avoid cutting personnel and days from the Murray Scholes Library? Not only does Murray Scholes burst with families for the children's programming and literature, but the branch staff serve adults, too. More and more, citizens have to control their lives, largely depending on their ability to navigate online processes. No less than the infrastructure maintained by the city, the library workers bridge the gap of the digital divide by directly helping people on their devices and on their computers and on our computers. Every day, marketing departments, nonprofits, businesses, and government agencies send and receive billions of emails a day, asking us to scan and download and click through a link to begin an online process. Just scan, print, certify, authenticate, and get an app, and register to get the help you need. All these senders expect that the recipients are ready to go with that. The library staff helps people who are not every day. Every time a user is asked to wrestle with an online purchase, an application, a certification test, instead of senders doing the administration for their clients and customers, clients and customers more and more are the ones who are supposed to do this work. It is impossible for many in this community. It is because the world has changed, and it is the library staff, including Murray Scholes workers, that help these citizens meet these daily demands in one-on-one help. We library workers are asked to give a lot of ourselves, to open up our hearts and be trusted. Giving of ourselves, while some cut into our staffing were to happen, would be harrowing to all of us. As you promise the equitable, connected city vision, remember, the library is part of this mechanism for empowerment. Please, find another way to balance the budget rather than cutting people and days from the Murray Scholes Library. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Peter Melanger, and I am a proud member of SEIU 503 Sublocal 198, and my job is one of the ones you're considering cutting. I've worked at the Beaverton Libraries since 2017, and since 2018, I've been a library assistant at the Murray Scholes Branch. It's a good job. I enjoy it, and I'm good at it. I've been working in libraries my entire adult life, and almost all of my jobs have been positive experiences. Murray Scholes is one of the best places I've ever worked. I have fantastic coworkers, and we serve an amazing community made up of people of all ages and from all walks of life. These patrons depend on us for the services we provide. If you cut our hours and services, many of them will be forced to do without rather than being able to travel to the main branch or to other libraries. Those people in the entire community deserve better than that. On a personal level, I need this job. My wife was laid off several months ago, and we both have medical issues that mean we can't lose access to health insurance. Good jobs are hard to come by, especially good library jobs. If these cuts go through, both my wife and I will be among the people who are hurt. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Megan Rasmussen, and I am a member of SEIU 503 Local 198. I'm currently a Support Specialist at the City of Beaverton, and I've been here for five years. I'm here tonight in solidarity with the library staff at Murray Scholes that are facing potential layoffs due to budget cuts, and urge you to find somewhere else in the budget to make the cuts needed. The environment at the city right now is one of low morale and overworked staff, intensified by a change of government, the pandemic, high turnover, and general uncertainty among staff. Cutting union jobs in this environment... Cutting union jobs in this environment, especially those jobs that are making twenty to twenty-five dollars an hour and work daily with the public, will only lead to worsening retention across the organization in the roles that are working with the public and providing essential services every single day. Additionally, we know that the library plays an important role in the Beaverton community. I live next to a WCCLS library outside of the city of Beaverton that will be expanding its services to better serve its growing community. My two-year-old son and I love going to book babies, and I see it as a vital part of his early education. By taking away services that are largely attended by young families, it tells young families like mine that my child's education is the least worthy service to fund. Furthermore, with previous cuts eliminating a childcare startup and expansion program, as a parent, I am bothered by the fact that services for children seem to be the first to go. Cutting libraries only continues to make Beaverton a less desirable location to live, especially for young families. I urge you to look to restore some of the library hours and positions, and make this a city we all want to work, live, and play in moving forward. Thank you.
Jennifer, Araceli, Daniel, and on deck, Kelly, Christina, and Steve.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Wolfe, and I am a proud member of SEIU 503 Sublocal 198. I am currently a librarian on the community engagement team with the Beaverton City Library, and I've been with the city of Beaverton for fifteen years and am a resident for my whole life. With the currently proposed budget of reducing the open hours at the Marie Scholes Branch from seven days to four days, city leadership has suggested that the library's new bookmobile could serve the South Beaverton area. Taking this suggestion to heart, our outreach team thinks we are able to squeeze in a short visit to the Marie Scholes area once a week this summer, contingent on agreements with the property owners. However, the current plans for the bookmobile only include patrons being able to borrow from a limited collection and return library materials. There are no plans for storytimes, programs, hold pickups, computer access, or printing, all of which the Marie Scholes Branch currently provides seven days a week. To provide further context, the bookmobile is funded by a grant from the Library Services and Technology Act, and in this application, we had to be very specific about which populations our new bookmobile would serve. The express purpose of the bookmobile is to serve neighborhoods with limited access to transportation, lower-income households, people who speak a language other than English at home, and immigrants and refugees who are new to the area. To that end, in the last five months, our outreach team has focused intentionally on developing a route that will bring the bookmobile to locations and populations in Beaverton that are most in need of library services, with the limited time that our half-time bookmobile staff member can provide. To conclude, while we believe that access to the books that the bookmobile will bring is incredibly important, it is not an adequate substitute for the full range of services that the Marie Scholes Branch provides. Please consider other budget options that keep these services available to the South Beaverton community. Thank you.
My name is Aracelia Costa, and I am a proud member of SEIU 503 Sublocal 198. I'm currently a youth outreach specialist on the community engagement team with Beaverton City Library, and I have been with the city of Beaverton for eleven years. As an outreach specialist, I have the opportunity to interact with the community outside of the library, something I value dearly. I get to hear firsthand their thoughts, experiences, and questions. I can't tell you how many times I've promoted library services such as storytimes or the summer reading program, and the first follow-up question begins with, "Is that at the Marie Scholes Branch too?" Or, "Do you know Ms. Mackenzie?" I'm thankful that currently, I can reassure the community that yes, indeed, we do offer these services at the Marie Scholes Branch, and yes, I know Ms. Mackenzie. Many times, the second part of the conversation includes praises of the programs offered at Marie Scholes, helpful staff, and how nice it is to have a library so close to home. It is clear to me that the South Beaverton community loves the library and library staff. It saddens me that the community, along with dedicated library staff, will be negatively impacted by the current budget proposal to reduce hours and service at the Marie Scholes Branch. None of the services they mentioned could be done without dedicated staff at the Marie Scholes Branch. Additionally, I think it is important to note that several of the members negatively impacted by the current proposed budget cuts are members of the library's Anti-Racism Action Committee. These staff members have contributed tremendous amounts of work and intention towards centering equity within the workplace. The library's vision is to be the foundation for an engaged and thriving community. I believe that community is all-encompassing. We as staff are also part of this community that wishes to support one another. Please consider other budget options that keep current library services available and help us continue to support a thriving community with Beaverton.
Good evening, Councilors. My name is Danielle Meininger, and I'm a proud member of SEIU 503 Sublocal 198. I'm currently a reference assistant with the city library. I actually started at the Marie Scholes Branch five years ago. Beaverton City Library prides itself on its work on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Yet the people in positions targeted run counter to this important work. Of the eight staff members who received their unofficial layoff notices in early May, two of them were previously members of the citywide internal equity team. Three of them are current members of the library's Anti-Racism Action Committee, and one of them is the only BIPOC staff member at the Marie Scholes Branch. These staff members have done important work, including providing training and reflection opportunities, revising policies, piloting employee resource groups, and furthering the work of the Staff Diversification Initiative. By targeting these people and positions, it begs the question of how much the city of Beaverton and Beaverton City Library truly value diversity, equity, and inclusion. We beg you to reconsider these cuts and define solutions that show not only how we not only value, but how we wholeheartedly embrace diversity, equity, and inclusion here in Beaverton. Thank you.
Kelly, Christina, Steve, and on deck, Olga.
Kelly.
Yes, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Kelly Perkins. I am a member of SEIU 503 Local 198. I'm here tonight in solidarity with a staff member of Marie Scholes Library that will be impacted by the layoffs slated in the proposed budget cuts. I am humbled to share her statement with you tonight. I am an SEIU 503 Local 198 member and one of the individuals losing their position at the Marie Scholes Branch of the Beaverton City Library. I believe cutting hours and staff would be a huge loss for the community of South Beaverton at a time when patrons are beginning to return to the library in large numbers. As a library assistant, I regularly hear how much our patrons appreciate our services, staff, and programs, and how for many of them, it's the only library they can reach. I often hear people ask if we are expanding hours. Cutting the service days and staff at Marie Scholes would unfairly punish the community who use the library and need our resources, and the staff who struggled to maintain services during the pandemic. Additionally, the remaining staff would have to perform the same amount of work with far more limitations. I have always wanted to work in a public library, and when I got the job at Marie Scholes, I was able to fulfill that dream. I work with dedicated, kind, and patient people who work hard to serve our patrons and help the community. The majority of those being cut have been at the branch for several years. These cuts would be devastating to each one of them, and I believe a disservice to the neighborhoods and people we serve. I know these are tough decisions. Thank you for your time.
Mayor Beatty, Councilors, thanks for giving me a couple of minutes to speak with you. My name is Steve Ridgway. Full disclosure, I'm a resident of Portland, but I own a small business that rents an office space in Beaverton. My story isn't nearly so heartrending as many of those we've heard from the supporters of the library, but I'm concerned about the effect that the new budget will have upon my business, but most especially my staff and my friends who live in Beaverton. So I sat in on the Budget Committee call a couple of weeks ago, three hours, forty-five minutes, and I came away with a couple of strong impressions. First, I was amazed at the level of the increase, proposed increase in the property taxes, up to $4.61.8 per thousand in assessed value, right up against the legal limit of $4.62. And if the tax is currently still $4.23, that's an increase of over nine percent in one year. It probably won't affect me personally, but I know that low-income people who live in Beaverton, who can barely pay their mortgages, or who can barely pay their rent, which is likely to go up if their landlord has a nine percent property tax increase, are really going to struggle, and I hope that you will think about the effect that an increase of that degree will have on lower-income people in the community. I was also surprised, really, that the cuts that were proposed in a $165 million general fund were limited to a few library staffers and some funding for emergency services. Hundred and sixty-five million dollars, hundred and fifty-three or so people working for the city. So, I know as most business managers would leave no stone unturned if they were faced with a significant operating loss, or in their case, a significant budget deficit, to find ways to reduce costs while still maintaining services. I was also surprised to see that the proposed budget calls for increases in salaries and even new positions. Again, most business managers I know would put on a salary freeze and a hiring freeze until the company was on sound financial footing. So, Mayor, you talk about trust. I think that the city needs to look more closely at ways to reduce costs internally, and perhaps shift those cost savings from the two that were proposed, and I think you will find that you will maintain the trust of the community to a greater degree if you do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Olga and Christine Klein? Or Christina?
My name is Olga Straight, and I'm a Beaverton City resident, a proud... Thank you. A proud former SEIU member, and I feel like the larks. I speak for the trees. I speak for the librarians here. Librarians bring value to people's lives. I speak also for any library user. As they flock in after the pandemic again, every day, young and old, rich and poor, housed and homeless. Librarians, library staff are an integral vital institution in our community, like teachers who educate generations of students. Their foundations of knowledge irreplaceable, as they point us to the necessary resources and help us find out what we need to know and what we did not even know we did not know. If librarians are let go, we let go of gems in our community, like letting go of elders in a tribe, our tribe. We cannot look the other way. They have their roots in our community, just like any library user. They have served our tribe, like teachers, like doctors, for years or decades. If they are let go, it is a travesty. It's going to be an earthquake, tremblers, going through the whole library community and our community as such. Thus, their lives are uprooted. They are made to suffer great loss of their livelihoods. I declare our aged librarians as an endangered species we need to preserve. It will create a huge devastation for aged librarians, librarian staff. But, we also deprive the Marie Scholes library users by cutting library access hours. We have responsibility to protect our own rather than making them pay the price for budget shortfall, yes, even if it's a daunting one. Money is not everything, but in our case, it is everything. It means providing the protection for our important community resources. They have been leaders, who have been quietly doing their work to improve the well-being of our tribe here after year. So many world challenges facing us, and the people who come after us. We need to protect librarians and libraries. They are free to everybody, to use and benefit everybody. This access and these important, highly-trained servants need to stay. Once let go, they are gone. I speak for all the library users who cannot be here now, those who might be sinking their testimony, cannot make a difference. Let it not be done, done deal tonight. There has to be another solution to keep funding for our libraries and for our librarians, librarian staff. Please, do not vote on this today. Create a space to think. Can we raise taxes on sports tickets, a tax on cultural tickets? Can we do a tax on parking, a bond, a monthly donate to the library librarians? Whatever, there has to be other solutions. I'm sorry, it will be over.
That's okay. Thank you. Okay, I'm out of cards, city recorder. Is there anyone left wishing to address the council? Oh, we do have one online.
Yes.
Okay. Mike Flanagan? Mike, you've been given granted to speak. Okay. All right. I am now going to close the public hearing on tonight's budget, on the city's budget and the city's proposed use of state shared revenue. Before we begin deliberation on the budget as approved by the Budget Committee, we need a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 4840, thereby adopting the proposed FY 2023-24 budget as approved by the Budget Committee. I know there's at least one amendment to the proposed budget. Once the main motion is made and seconded, we will take each proposed amendment one at a time. If an amendment is moved and seconded, we will discuss that proposed amendment, then vote on it. Once a proposed amendment either carries or fails, we will then consider the next amendment, if any, in a similar way until all amendments are fully considered. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 4840?
Yes, Mayor. I move that the council approve Resolution 4840, a resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2023, making appropriations and determining making and declaring ad valorem tax levy as provided by ORS 310.060, subsection 2.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. I have a request here for a short recess. Okay, let's take a short bathroom break and come back as fast as possible. Thanks. Thanks. Okay, so we left off, it was moved and seconded. So I know we have discussion, we have an amendment, a pre-submitted amendment by Councilor Kimmy. Go ahead.
Yes, I have an amendment, Mayor. I move the City Council amend Exhibit A to the budget resolution by reducing $111,000 from the General Fund, Department of Equity and Inclusion, eliminating the funding for one program manager, transferring those funds to the Library Fund 115, and increasing the library fund's personal services by $111,000. And also amend Exhibit B to the budget resolution by adding one library assistant to full-time equivalent.
All right, it's been moved and seconded by Councilor Dugger. Any discussion on the motion? Councilor Hassan.
We're going to vote on the amendment soon, correct? Thank you. While I admire this amendment, and I want to be very clear that I want to do everything and anything we can to support library staff, to the extent that I would consider trying to delay this discussion to the next meeting, which I was going to throw in somewhere but haven't had a chance to, I find it really complex that we would go after the equity and inclusion role specifically, when that is one of our smallest offices. Having worked in diversity and equity and inclusion, like not staffing a department correctly to make it be successful is, I believe, not the solution. I believe there are other staff positions that we could consider. I'm really hesitant. I mean, I'd like to hear from others, but I find it highly problematic that we would take the, I think, I'm just going to pull it up because I can, four senior staff, or nine total in equity and inclusion, and it looks like it's the coordinator, program manager. I've worked in equity and inclusion for a long time. It's something that I think I'm pretty good at. I care deeply about equity and inclusion. I also deeply want to make sure that we fund the libraries. I don't think this is the place that we should be taking it from. It sends a really poor message to our community. I think that when I think of immigrant and refugee communities and communities who feel disconnected from the city, there's a couple places where they feel connected. Probably our library staff, thank you, but also our equity staff. And so to take it, like, I get it, and I know that we're having to do this, and that's where we are today. I will support other amendments that find other ways to get this money. There are a lot of things that I'd be willing to support, and I will say that now. I would support it in other areas. I'll say more later. This is not the place for me. Thank you.
Councilor Kimmy, did he want to talk, or were you doing the amendment? You want to talk again? Okay.
Yeah, so I do appreciate Councilor Hassan's comments. I do understand the feeling. I received emails and heard many comments from the residents about the need for additional library hours. I spent countless hours finding a way to make it happen. This amendment is very personal and yet painful to me because it reduces the funding for Equity and Inclusion Department, which I hold dearly to my heart. However, the amendment will allow us to open the library for one additional day, increasing from four days to five days. And the access to the library is important because it is an equity and inclusion need for every Beaverton resident. And it is painful, but something I find that was necessary to help all the residents.
Councilor Dugger.
Yeah, what to say about this? I support this amendment. I don't love it. I think you've heard that is a continuing theme for me tonight. Without going too much into process, my uncle called when I won my election and was like, write down the number of votes you got, because there will be nights when you need to look at that number. For the first time since September, I had to look at that number today. I do not feel confident in any of this process, but I don't like that we're cutting equity. Something is a member of a body that hasn't had someone like me up here before. It feels personal, but it also feels necessary because I also know the value of the library. I also remember, he also told me that politics is the art of the possible, right? It's compromise. We don't get what we want. This budget does not reflect my values in a way that I want it to, but it's something we're going to have to live with. And it's one of those decisions as a person, as a human being, I hate all of this. As a counselor, my job is to represent the entire city, to represent the reality that we're in. This is a terrible year for money. It sucks. None of us contributed to that, or at least I didn't, I don't think any. I'm looking for someone to be mad at, right, that got us here. I don't know who to be mad at, but I can support this amendment because I think the library means a lot to me personally. And I think that with the hiring of the new equity person that will lead this, my hope is that as we reorg that, we can get a really good needs assessment from that individual, and we can revisit this in the future and staff it appropriately. But for now, this is a less painful amendment than doing nothing. And that's what, those are the choices that we have. It's like, do we do something that makes it less awful? Or do we, you know, do we continue as is and this feels less awful? And so I can support this amendment. And thank you, Councilor Kimmy, for making it.
Thank you. I think, too, the important, when I sat down with Councilor Kimmy to talk about this, the important thing to note here is that we're not eliminating the position. We're eliminating the funding of an unfilled manager position. So this doesn't mean this goes awake forever, but this buys us some time. It gives us an additional day at the library, and it can help our argument down the road when the library levy comes back up. So for us, I think this is a temporary funding mechanism to get an additional day at the library, and I'm willing to support the amendment tonight. Councilor Teeter.
Yeah, thank you. I feel a lot of pain with this one, specifically, because I see libraries, I see social services, I see climate action, equity, like some of the top priorities we could possibly have. And it feels, it feels really dirty or wrong to put, like, two of the top values against each other, when there have got to be other places in our budget where that funding could come from. Now, I know I made a couple amendments, a couple, or a couple of suggestions and amendments a couple weeks ago at Budget Committee that were very hard, too. And like, I get it, like, we're trying to find any funding we can possibly find that can get the support of the council, enough support to actually pass, and that's really hard. And we don't always like the amendments and suggestions that we're making, but we're trying to find a path forward. So like, I appreciate the effort to find a path forward. I still don't know how I would vote on it right now. I appreciate that it's vacant, and that helps. And I would hope that there is a plan to move forward and refill that position in the future, as kind of a stopgap measure to fund a library for a little bit longer. So I'm just, I'm really struggling with this. I don't like how it pits two of my highest values against each other.
Councilor Hassan.
When we started setting up the Equity Office and getting the approval for this, there was the idea that it would be an office, and the only way that you can make that successful is with staff and with some access to funding. You are taking an office that has not even been set up in the city, and you are setting it up for failure if you do this. I understand that that might be the decision that you all feel that we need to make. I believe there are other vacant positions and/or areas where we could find this. This is not the right decision.
Council President.
Thank you. I think we've all had to look, I mean, I think we've dug, we've all dug and scoured through this budget to find something. I know for me, the reason why this is interesting is it is currently vacant. It is not a layoff. And because it is a typically funded position, it would be ongoing funding that we could use to keep this. Like, this is not just for six more months, we get another day. This is like something that we can actually say is solid funding. And I don't think that there's a lot of options. We've been looking for them. So I think that this is a creative option. I think that because the position is currently vacant, like, maybe lessens the sting a little bit, you know? So I appreciate the amendment, Councilor.
Councilor Tivnan.
I've been told to stop turning my head because people in the back can't hear me when I do that. I'll try not to. And please, raise your hand if you can't hear me. I think everyone here probably has had trouble sleeping lately, very tight in my chest all the time, and I think part of that is because nothing feels good about this. And the comment made about Hillsborough earlier, I have to say, they don't have a budget deficit. They're adding jobs. They are one of the outliers in our metro area. Most others are in very bad shape right now, including our county. We've never had to deal with this before. This is my third budget, so I'm not steeped in experience in this. But I have read every single email that's been sent. I've read a lot of them twice, and I feel, I feel all of the need, and in some cases, the desperation and the anger, not only on this, but on the topic we covered earlier in the evening. And there's going to be people that are going to get hurt, no matter what we do. And it's trying to figure out how to minimize the damage as much as possible. I'm speaking completely off the cuff, and I apologize if this hits wrong for anybody. Thinking through this, I agree with you that we've had conversations about starting up an office that needs to get off on the right foot, and it has to have the staff and do that and programming. It's going to be really important since it's so outward-facing later on, but internal programming for now, I believe. So I don't think the money can come from there. I also, we looked at a map that showed the usage of the different libraries, and they're lower at Mary Schulz, but that's not the thing that I was looking at. I was looking at all of the area west of it, especially Cooper Mountain, not South Cooper Mountain, but Cooper Mountain, which we've been talking about for years now, developing the plan to bring thousands and thousands of homes online, including new revenue. And the numbers and the demand is going to change. And if this is the choice, I can't support, I can't support that for a day. And to Councilor Hartmeyer-Prigg's point, I don't see where we squeeze the money out somewhere else without having another, another complete tumble down into very painful conversations of where it's going to hurt. This is an area I think we can, we can bring back. I don't feel good about this, but I'm going to vote no on that amendment.
City Manager, when I was reviewing the budget in this department after seeing the amendment in the package, since that position has been unfunded, could that, it's been unfilled, could that money be used as a part-time position in equity inclusion to support the manager?
So approximately $111,000 would be transferred to the library to fund a library assistant to, and that would just allow for the opening of one day. Not the full funding amount will be transferred over, so there'll be a delta of about $60,000, if I have that correctly, that will remain in the division. That would be enough to be able to do some limited-duration staffing as we kind of continue to work towards fiscal sustainability over the next couple of years. And then, of course, that's pending, depending if we have some additional one-time that comes our way. So not all the funding will be transferred to that one position, and that would open the library an extra day.
Okay. So it looks like we will have some money left to do a limited-duration position, so we could get a day at the library and have a limited-duration position in equity inclusion that feels like a win for right now? Councilor Teeter.
Jenny, I've got a question for you. And here's my mic. Okay. Jenny, I've got a question for you. Well, I've got two questions for you. You just mentioned there'd be some funding left over in the Equity Officer, Equity Office. How much is needed for a permanent full-time position?
It depends on the actual position itself, but I would say at least a minimum of double or slightly more. I'd probably defer to Seal and Strummer. She has an idea off the top of her head, but don't quote me on that. But it would need to be at least double at a minimum.
Jenny, I think you're right on that rough estimate.
Okay, so there's, so we'd need about $60,000 more?
And that would need to be $60,000 more of permanent, ongoing revenue.
Okay. And then, we're focusing a lot on this vacant position. Are there other vacant positions in the General Fund available that could be another option?
The other vacant position is the Program Coordinator in the Neighborhood Program.
Okay.
I would add, Council, that these two positions were not included in the recommended budget for these very reasons that you're struggling with.
Okay. Okay, so we need to vote on this amendment. Will the recorder call the roll?
Councilor Dugger.
Yes.
Councilor Kimmy.
Yes.
Hartmeyer-Prigg.
Yes.
Hassan.
No.
Teeter.
Sorry, I keep getting confused. No.
Tivnan.
No.
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
Motion carries four to three.
Okay. Do we have any other amendments?
I do, Mayor.
Council President, go ahead.
So, quick context, I was just looking for other things. I know part of my support for this last amendment was the ongoing funding. I'm not a huge fan of one-time fixes, just because we know that only is delaying more trouble for us. But there is some unspent funds in our ARPA matching fund from, I think it's in Tranche One, that I would love to propose that we move. So my amendment is to move that City Council amends Exhibit A of the budget resolution by removing $75,000 from the ARPA matching and CSFR fund, item number 13. It's on page 370. Because these funds have not yet been expended, and transfer that $75,000 to the Emergency Management Program 0635 for a limited-duration position. It's page 370 of the budget.
I'll second that motion.
I can just kick it off. I gave a tiny bit of the context before the motion. I want to emphasize this is only one-time funding. I know we were able to secure a little bit of funding through the Budget Committee to also send a cert, but we know it wasn't really enough. I think we need a little bit more time to get that plan together around emergency management. And so I think that, like, I want to emphasize this is one-time, so this is not something that we can rely on as being something that we can continue to use going forward, but it does give us the fiscal year, perhaps with a limited-duration position, to give Jenny and that team some space to come back with that plan that the mayor was asking for around emergency management.
Yeah. I concur with you. I think, having seen CERT execute as the mayor in multiple arenas, plus my years on City Council, I've been out when they were doing their radio training out on 170th. I've seen how they come together in our events. I've seen how they have supported our houseless community. I've seen how they have supported our houseless community. And we can't build emergency management assets in a crisis. And so I think this is a good amendment. Thank you for scouring the budget and finding it. Counselor Hassan, is this, I'm sorry, Counselor Teeter.
Yeah, thanks. I just want to clarify, that 75,000, is that, what was that dedicated for originally?
Yeah, it was some pre-development funding for a South Cooper Mountain project that is not moving forward.
Oh, the, the, okay, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I want to, sorry, can you, so arbitrage 175,000, that was for South Cooper Mountain Library pre-development work?
Yes.
To go to CERT?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it's one-time funding, right? Like, since we only have it one time.
Okay, and so just one time, like, why not library? Just if I can understand.
Because it, it doesn't help us get a permanent solution for library. Right? Like, it, it doesn't get us a day. It doesn't get us, you know, like, it's not enough to get us another day. Yeah.
And CERT, it's like halftime, is that?
That would be TBD.
Okay. Need to think on that.
Any other questions?
And then if I could just add one thing, I've got clarification for Council President for your amendment. It would be recommended that you add language to add a transfer category to ARPA Fund to transfer $75,000 to the General Fund.
So I need to adjust my amendment to ensure that it includes the transfer category from ARPA to the General Fund.
That is correct.
Okay. Let me just restate my motion, if that's okay. Is that okay, City Attorney? Okay. All right, so I will, as a point of clarification to my amendment, I move that the City Council amend Exhibit A of the Budget Resolution by removing $75,000 from the ARPA Fund. Sorry, City Manager, I'll tag you in. What was the specific language I needed to say?
Could the Finance Department read the proper motion? And that might help.
So that would be to remove $75,000 from the Materials and Services.
Okay.
And add a transfer, I guess, category into the ARPA so that we can transfer the money from ARPA to the library or to the General Fund for Emergency Services.
Okay. Okay, so I move that we amend the budget to remove the 75K from the ARPA Materials and Services into a transfer category so that we can transfer that to the General Fund. And that would be into the Emergency Management Program 0635 in the amount of $75,000. Finance Director, City Attorney, was that crisp enough?
That works for me, thank you.
It works for Finance, it works for Legal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. As the Seconder, I'm fine with a friendly amendment. Counselor Kimmy.
Yeah, so because I wasn't in the discussion when we were dedicating or designating ARPA funds, I just want to know why is it not spent and what the $75,000 will get us at the CERT? That's my question.
So as a part of your Budget Committee, there was an amendment that was adopted that was initiated by the mayor to add additional $40,000 in temporary employee staffing funding. This would add and supplant to that, so you'd have $115,000. That would allow us to temporarily either identify a limited duration position or another type of position based on our assessment. And so that would stabilize and ensure continued support to the level, I think, of the Emergency Management CERT volunteers that testified this evening while we address kind of the restructuring process, which I would be coming back to Council to clarify because that was the direction of the Subcommittee Amendment. This money that is being proposed by Hartmeyer-Prigg is that we had, did not spend it on pre-development work for the South Cooper Mountain Library, which was going to be donated through land. And that is no longer a viable option. So we have not yet allocated those funds and so they remain available for your allocation. And that is what is on the amendment before you right now.
And we had attempted to get a federal congressional directed spending and we couldn't secure that as well as the land fell through. So we were trying all at one time to do it and we needed the pre-development money in case it all came together and then it, it didn't. Yep, and that's not like we've known for a long time, so. Is this new, Counselor Hassan? Go ahead.
I'm a little hesitant to support, just speaking candidly. To me, ARPA really served a specific purpose. That was around pandemic relief and really helping us figure that out. And for me, if, if we knew that there is a 75,000 that's supposed to be designated for that, like, I'd want us to have that policy conversation around what we could do with that in our community. I, of course, want to be thoughtful of, of the staff that, you know, that we're talking about here. I'm not saying I'm a no, I'm just, I'm really hesitant right now because to me, when, when I was on Council and we got the ARPA funding, it felt like every dollar, like, we were like, and this, and this, and that. And so I just, it, it gives me great pause to, to take that. And especially like when I think of the, the vision of what ARPA money is, right? It's Relief Plan Act, and so it's helping folks that suffered from the COVID pandemic. And so what helps us with pandemic relief? Yes, we need emergency management, that's a critical service. And there are communities that are still significantly suffering post-pandemic in terms of economic recovery, their ability to pay their bills, et cetera, et cetera. So I just want to think, like, is there, should that go to relief for families that are struggling in the city? You know, like, that's just kind of my hesitation and pause right now, but I'd love to hear from others.
Counselor Kimmy.
Okay, thanks for having this amendment. So I can be engaged a little more. So with regards to ARPA funding, does it have to be decided tonight? Can we come up with policy decision, maybe more discussion later on? We designate the fund, how, how we may see fit?
Well, this is amendment we have to vote on. So you have to take a vote. If you don't want to vote on the amendment, then you have to vote no. Because it's on the floor.
I mean, for the later date.
Oh, if we said no, then, yeah?
Yeah.
But it still would be in the budget for another purpose.
That is correct. However, if you want to have a policy discussion specifically on that use, you certainly could do that at a different time, assuming that the amendment does not pass.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Tivnan.
Yeah, thank you. I, 75,000 doesn't go very far when it's applied in certain ways. There was, there's been hours of compelling testimony tonight and a lot of that was for this CERT program, which was very indispensable during the pandemic with the vaccine clinic. And if this buys us time to staff that more appropriately and so they can be responsive and keep our volunteer base healthy and strong, then I'd say I can support that until we try and scrape together funding for that as well as the library and the other, the other folks that have come out to us loudly saying that they want to see their funding restored. So I can get behind it.
Counselor Dugger.
Yeah, I can support it, too. I think CERT is one of the highest ROIs that we get because it's, we just coordinate volunteers, right? We train them and they do the work for free. And as someone who has seen it firsthand at the vaccine clinics, we all know Cascadia is coming. This is a, this is an easy one for me to support and I thank you for bringing it up. This is, I've been trying to figure this out myself, so I appreciate your creative. I didn't know we had the 75,000 or I would have brought it up myself, so thank you for that.
Well, good thing you're going to take credit. Counselor Hassan.
I still have my hesitation, but I can get on board because I hear enough majority. But I hope if others feel otherwise, they would say so. I, I do want to make sure we're, we're managing expectations that this is one time to what you said. And so, you know, and this is a bigger policy conversation. It's like, what is the city's role in emergency management? What is the county's role in emergency management? And how are we working together? That is a, a much bigger policy conversation that I want to make sure we're getting after while we Band-Aid this situation.
All right, City Recorder, time for a vote.
Counselor Dugger.
Yes.
Kimmy.
Yes.
Hartmeyer-Prigg.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Teeter.
Yes.
Tivnan.
Yes.
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any more amendments to consider? Counselor Teeter.
Yeah, mine's not an amendment, but I do have a clear, or a question for, for Jenny from earlier. The, the amendment we made two ago from the Equity Office position to libraries, can you expand again why that's only able to fund like one position? Or why does some funding have to remain in the Equity Office? A little unclear on some of that.
Sure, so to keep the library open for one extra day with no additional programming, just the doors open, the estimate is $111,000. So that is the amount that we need to transfer to the library fund to restore a library assistant, too. The value of the Program Manager exceeds that. So the remainder, which is $60,000, will stay within the Equity Division. Is that helpful?
Yes, that is helpful, okay. And I've got a follow-up question. Okay, $60,000, is that enough to fund another library position at a lower pay rate?
That would be challenging. You, you could potentially maybe do a part-time position, but again, this is only one-time funding. So have to think about that.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Okay, so we've had two amendments roll through. Is there any other amendments before we move to the next portion?
This is not an amendment, this is just a comment. Like, I want to open up this time to say, like, are there ways that you guys want to talk through? Like, I have done as much scouring as I can. Like, I'm happy to revisit some of the things we've talked about. Maybe we're past that and that's okay, too. One of my sort of lingering questions was like, could we buy some time and come back again on the 20th? I know that maybe I'm just waiting, maybe I'm just pushing the inevitable. But I've had some hesitations around this budget and where the values and decisions were made. So just opening that up in case others feel that way or not.
Yeah, you would have to make an amendment. We're in a public hearing, so we can't do it that way. Do you feel strong enough to make an amendment? Okay. Did you have another thing, Counselor Teeter?
No, I was just scratching my face, but I will add something that I was thinking.
Just remember, we're in a public hearing, guys, so it needs to be relevant to what we're discussing.
Yes, it is. Got it, yeah. I know all of us have been really struggling with this budget and really scouring it. And, and I agree with some of the comments that have been made already. Like, there are a lot of things in this budget that are not in line with my values. And part of the trouble is coming on six months ago to this council, a lot of the budget work was already in progress. And a lot of it reflects the values of, of a previous council. And our, our character changes even when one person changes on council. There are, so there are several policy conversations that I would like us to have in more detail, such as school resource officers, houselessness response and services. Like, how can we do things more affordably and more effectively supporting the mental health and, and the social care of our, of our communities? But those questions are so big, I, I've heard this from some of my colleagues, who want to have a deeper conversation before talking about these things and like a 10-minute budget amendment process. So like, I would love to dig into some of these questions more and just learn more, ask questions together more and find out where our policies, policy priorities lie as a council so that our next budget can build out of that, too, and be more in line with what our community wants and what we're looking for, too. And it's a hard process, so love to see that.
I appreciate that. I also want to remind the council, we did what you're asking us to do and we set out the priorities behind us. The budget the City Manager gave us was based on the priorities we set together. The best way, if those aren't your values, to impact the budget is when we meet again to bring them forward in November when we meet with our council goals again. And I think our City Manager has given us a work plan based on what we've asked her to do. So I understand there's a million things I, as the mayor, want us to do and accomplish. And I've been on the council, it's my 10th year. There's so much I want us to do, but we have so much work on our plate right now. We need to really consider what we're asking of our staff. Okay, with that, we are, if there's no other amendments, we are ready to vote on the main motion, which is to approve Resolution 4840, a resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2023, making appropriations and determining and making and declaring the Al-Furun Tax Levy as provided ORS 31.02 as amended.
As amended.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we ready for a vote?
Counselor Dugger.
I always get to go first. Yes.
Hartmeyer-Prigg.
Yes.
Hassan.
No.
Kimmy.
Yes.
Teeter.
Yes.
Tivnan.
Yes.
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
The amended resol, uh, the budget is adopted 60, 61.
Thank you. Okay, we will take, take the next three items on the agenda as a group because they are related to proposed fees or rate increases. The three items are Resolution Number 4841, establishing the sanitary sewer and stormwater changes for the City of Beaverton, and repealing Resolution Number 4802, Resolution Number 4842, to increase the business license fee for the City of Beaverton, and repealing Resolution Number 4336, and Resolution Number 4843, establishing a fee for expedited passports. We will first hear from a staff presentation on each of these proposed resolutions. I will open up a public hearing for comment on all the proposed resolutions. Once public comments are all received, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion of each proposed resolution separately. Any vote on the resolution will be taken separately as well. Before I go any further, I will address how to participate in this hearing. If you are listening or watching remotely, if you've joined the meeting by phone, you can enter *9 to let the City Recorder know you wish to speak. Alternatively, if you join the meeting online, use the hand raise feature to show that you wish to speak. Each member of the public who speaks at tonight's hearing will have a maximum of two minutes. The floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to present. The first resolution I have before you is to adopt the sanitary sewer and stormwater rates and charges beginning July 1st, 2023. The rate increases proposed are recommended by the Clean Water Services Board. For this fiscal year, the city is proposing to match the CWS 4% increase and to add an additional 23 cents to sanitary sewer and 19 cents to the stormwater local fixed rates for capital improvement, repair and replacement projects. Am I controlling? Cool, all right. An average city customer, residential customer in the city with a winter water average use of about 8 CCF will see their sanitary sewer bill increase from $52.70 per month to $54.94 per month, which is an additional $26.88 per year. Their stormwater bill will increase from $12.46 per month to $13.08 per month, which is an additional $7.44 per year. The impact of these rate increases will generate an estimated $497,000 to the sewer fund and then $12,000 to the stormwater fund. These increases are reflected in the budget that was just adopted. The next resolution before you is a resolution to increase the business license fee for businesses operating in the City of Beaverton. The recommended rate increases are to increase the base fee from $75 to $100, increase the per-employee charge from $8.50 to $12. For apartments, hotels and motels, increase the per-unit charge from $1.25 to $1.80. For apartments, hotels and motels, increase the per-unit charge from $1.25 to $1.80. And finally, seasonal licenses from $25 to $34. The business license fee has not been increased in the city of Beaverton since 2016. The rates that we are, the increase to the fee that we are proposing captures inflation since 2016. The impact of increasing these fees will generate an approximate $210,000 of additional revenue to the general fund. This amount is reflected in the budget that was just adopted. And finally, the final resolution before you is to establish a fee for passport expedite services. The U.S. Department of State sets pretty much all the fees that we charge to customers for processing passport applications. The exception is the fee for expedite services. Expedite services are an optional services that customers can choose to elect to pay extra for, to speed up postage and processing times. The service does create additional handling and tracking by city staff compared to a standard application. The recommendation is to set this fee to $35. And as a comparison to the five closest passport acceptance facilities to the city of Beaverton, we would be above Washington County, Multnomah County, Lake Oswego and the post office, but below King City. On this slide, I've also included how they do their appointments. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any questions from, for staff from council on the three proposed resolutions? Okay, I will now take pub, you have one?
Yes.
By Hallmane's.
For the business license fees, is there a legal mechanism where we can charge additional fees based on like national revenue? So ultimately, what I'm getting at is like big chains and big national companies, I think, should pay more than our local business, small businesses. And I would like to see us like incentivize the growth of a small business community. And I did not know if there's a legal framework for us to do that, or if that is even allowed. So can you elaborate on that, please?
I'm gonna defer that to City Attorney.
In some ways, the structure right now is based upon number of employees, is that correct?
Yeah.
So the larger the organization, now that's doing business in Beaverton though.
Right, right.
Yeah, but.
Is there an additional layer we can add to, right? Like, I know that local McDonald's has X number of employees, right? But like, I feel like they should pay more than a small business in Beaverton that doesn't have 10,000 locations, right?
Right, I think what I'm gonna do is, given the time.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'll come back to, I'll give an answer to everybody, but I'll answer that question in terms of, what I'm hearing is maybe national revenue would be the function and plus, how many do you have here? And working out a system like that. And I'll answer that in a memo to everyone on council for.
Could you include in that, I do think a lot of chains are owned by local people. So maybe an annotation about. Counselor Teeter.
I love that idea from Counselor Dugger. Maybe if it's like somebody's first time applying for a business license and they're just starting out their business, if we can make that an easier barrier for them, or a lower barrier for them. My question was about the passport fees, and it seems like whenever I come in, there's usually somebody getting a passport. Is it busy like all hours of the day that it's in operation? And do we see a need to like grow it or have it run longer more often?
Sure, so at the, when we pivoted during the pandemic, we moved away from a first-come, first-served model in which previously we were serving an average of 25 customers a day, which is a lot considering we only have one passport acceptance agent. You know, for most passport acceptance agents do 10 to 12 a day. So we really do have a superstar working for us. So we moved to an appointment model to continue providing the service. Due to the limitations around scheduling, we dropped down to 10 appointments a day. And that can be, one appointment can hold one person or it could hold five people, so it does vary. With us coming out of the pandemic and the emergency declaration being over, we are modifying how we're doing appointments. So we're gonna move to a hybrid model beginning July 11th. So we will do appointments for customers who need appointments Mondays and Fridays with that same limitation of 10 appointment slots a day. And then Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, we will offer first-come, first-served appointments for people who need a little bit more immediate service. So that'll make us the only other agency besides King City that's offering appointments.
Okay, great, thank you, and thank you for being with us so late.
Counselor Tivnan.
Thank you. The only comment I would have is I, I like the idea of making it easier for new businesses to get licenses, but I don't like the idea of being almost punitive to larger businesses. I think let's attract as many businesses to Beaverton as we possibly can across the spectrum of services and also pay. Yeah, so I think that there's something there that I'm excited about, just helping people get the start. And then once they level up into something that's sustainable, then, like the store fund program, you know, then they just go to the basic amount that every business pays.
And I'm pretty sure as part of our Get Well Plan, we have a fee study coming that will look at some of this.
That is correct. So the fee study will look at options like such as Terry, and then we'll bring those options back to you.
Great. We will now take public comment on any of the three proposed resolutions. Is there anyone in the wings? All right, there appears to be no members of the public who wish to comment on this matter tonight. I hereby close the public hearing. Is there a motion regarding Resolution Number 4841 establishing sanitary sewer and stormwater changes for the city of Beaverton and repealing Resolution Number 4802?
Yes, Mayor, I move that the council adopt Resolution Number 4841 establishing the sanitary sewer and stormwater charges for the city of Beaverton and repealing Resolution Number 4802.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Hassan. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, we are ready for a vote. Would the city recorder please call the vote?
Counselor Tivnan, yes. Counselor Hassan.
Yes.
Counselor Teeter.
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy.
Yes.
Counselor Dugger.
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg.
Yes.
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted seven zero.
All right, is there a motion regarding Resolution Number 4842 to increase the business license fee for the city of Beaverton and repealing Resolution Number 4336?
Yes, Mayor, I move that the council adopt Resolution Number 4842 to increase the business license fee for the city of Beaverton and repeal Resolution Number 4336.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? We are ready for a vote.
Counselor Hassan.
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg.
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan.
Yes.
Counselor Teeter.
Yes.
Counselor Dugger.
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy.
Yes.
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted seven zero.
All right, is there a motion regarding Resolution Number 4843 establishing a fee or expedited passports, for expedited passports?
Yes, Mayor, I move that the council adopt Resolution Number 4843 establishing a fee for expedited passports.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? I will just say that I recently came and had both of my daughters' passports renewed, and we had to do them expedited. And our staff are the most wonderful passport people on the planet, and I would have paid double in an expedited fee because our photos were rejected by two places, and trying to get a three-week-old to get a passport photo might, I should get an award for it, or my husband, one of us. But they are wonderful here, and our services are stellar, and every person compliments our passport staff. So thank you so much for doing this, it's worth every penny. Will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Kimmy.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Teeter.
Yes.
Hartmeier-Prigg.
Yes.
Tivnan.
Yes.
Dugger.
Yes.
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted seven zero.
Great, okay, we have one last item on the agenda, and I will just say, I have an eight-week-old and I slept for three hours last night. So we do have council new business, but I might murder you all if you keep me here. So, anyone have any council new business?
I got some.
Yep.
I can make this really quick. It's been quite a long time since we have talked about the virtual meetings versus in-person meetings. I think that it's time to revisit that and consider going back to in-person meetings for all of our meetings, but with a hybrid option for either councilors that wish to be remote when needed or for members of the community that can't, for whatever reason, get down here to provide testimony or participate. I don't know when it would be convenient to have that conversation, but would love to see it at some point get on the agenda.
Okay, any other council new business? All right, seeing none, we're adjourned.